Well, thank you, everybody, for attending. Hi. Hi, everybody. Thank you for attending our Advisory Body Recognition Day, for those of you who did. And we're going to go ahead and bring the meeting back. Before we get started, you may notice that some of us are wearing a teal ribbon, and that is because today is Teal Day for Safety Awareness Action Month. And so this is, I'm sorry, Sexual Assault Awareness Month, I apologize. And so whether you see Lumina or Safer at Cal Poly, these both websites have a lot of information if you're interested in knowing more. So just wanted to give you a little bit about Teal Day. And we get to start the presentation today with a proclamation, and it is the Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month. And we have some awesome children that are going to come up in a few moments. And Katie Hollingsworth is going to be with the presentation. So we'll go ahead and kick it off with the proclamation, then I'll meet you right down there at the podium. So whereas April, Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month, marks a time to commit ourselves to ensuring that each and every child has access to a high-quality early learning environment at home, childcare, school, and in the community that will promote their optimal growth and development. Saturday, April 8th, we'll commemorate the Day of the Child at the Annual Children's Day in the Plaza, celebration from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m. in the downtown Mission Plaza, where children and families will have the opportunity to discover creativity, individuality, diversity, and the arts while exploring community resources. April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, raising awareness and recognizing that each of us has a role to play in ensuring the safety of our children, as we pledge our support for strategies that strengthen families and protect our young ones by promoting our Normalizing Parenting Campaign and introduce Children's Memorial Day in a virtual ceremony on Friday, April 28, 2023, at 1:00 p.m. with our Child Abuse Prevention Council. Now, therefore, I, Erica A. Stewart, Mayor of the City of San Luis Obispo, on behalf of the entire city council, proclaim April 2003 as the Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Hello, and good evening. My name is Katie Hollingsworth. Do you want to say your name?
No.
Okay. This is Jett. And I'm here representing CAPSLO and the San Luis Obispo County Child Care Planning Council. I want to start out by thanking you for the opportunity to celebrate and acknowledge the over 54,000 diverse children that live in San Luis Obispo County, who are the bright future of our world. Each and every child deserves the chance to live, play, and grow into a strong, resilient, and successful adult. And we thank you for supporting our efforts as you continue to prioritize them within your community. Your participation and collaboration with the We Are the Care Initiative has truly changed the lives of so many children and families in our county, and we look forward to our continued partnership. Each year in April, we celebrate the Month of the Child and also recognize Child Abuse Prevention Month. It is a time for us to stop and recognize that each and every one of us plays a vital role in ensuring that children are granted every opportunity to thrive here in San Luis Obispo County. We encourage you to join us this month at the many events that are held throughout the county to celebrate the Month of the Child. The soonest would be this Saturday, April 8th. Children's Day in the Plaza will be hosted at the Mission to commemorate the Day of the Child. Over 50 organizations will come together to offer a day of family fun and activities, along with the information and resources for families and children. We hope that you'll be able to join us on Friday, April...
I want to get down.
You want to get down. Just a couple more minutes. You can eat your goldfish.
There's my goldfish.
We also hope that you will join us on April 28th at the statewide raising of the Children's Memorial Flag here at the downtown courthouse in San Luis Obispo. This flag is a symbol of the Child Abuse Prevention Month and reminds us that too many children in our world suffer daily from abuse and neglect, and that they need and deserve our protection and care. Though we only proclaim April to be the Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month, our children need us to continue to prioritize them and their needs throughout every month of every year.
Tell Mom.
It is our collective responsibility to demonstrate that the youth of our community are of the utmost importance and deserve our commitments in time, money, collaboration, and unified support. I want to thank you again for allowing for us to have this opportunity, and we look forward to another year of continued collaboration and connection. We hope to see you at Children's Day in the Plaza.
Thank you so much. Bye-bye. Now you can have your goldfish. Well, next up, City Manager Derek Johnson gets to follow cute little children and present the City Manager Report.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. That's a very tough act to follow. I'll try to live up to it. But, you know, so I've got some beautiful wildflowers. Maybe that's the best I can compete tonight that are currently gracing our coast. So I want to, as part of the update, I want to share with the councils, we go to the next slide. I know that there was a lot of community concern that was expressed about the mountain lion that was, it was seen in our community. And I want to just let everyone know that it was safely trapped by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And the California Department of Fish and Wildlife has conducted tests. They've placed a collar with a GPS tracking device and then relocated the mountain lion to a remote area far away from where it was interacting with some of our neighbors around Laguna Lake area, and it is not expected to return. Moving down to the next slide, just want to ask the community to join Mr. Bunny on Saturday, April 8th, for the Egg Sighting Adventure at Meadow Park to celebrate spring. You can kick off the day at 11:00 a.m. for an egg hunt for ages zero to eight. Bring your own basket. After the hunt, stay and enjoy a lunch for both free activities as well as local vendors. Included in the event are special appearances by Bunny and Roman the Romaine, live music by Koo Dog and Friends, and a food truck onsite with lunch for sale. There'll be face painting, interactive booths, a vendor fair, and more included in the Days for All Ages. And the Slow Food Bank will be in attendance, and there'll be optional donations that can be made to them directly. Moving down to the next slide, I just wanted to share with the community that the Summer Activity Guide is out now, and so it's out. And new pages and new features have been added to make the guide easier to use. And people can visit online at slowrecactivities.org, and you just need to create an account before registering and sign in. You can view recreation programs or request a facility reservation. You can pay online. You can enjoy recreational activities and facilities in San Luis Obispo. And for further information, you can call the front desk at 805-781-7300, or you can email us at recreation@slowcity.org. And there are also 711 services also available for those calling within California if you need assistance with accessing rec programs. Moving to the next slide, I just wanted to share that the bronze sculpture typically featured in the fountain in Mission Plaza is being restored to its former glory. And so Wasua, The Child and Bear, and Bear Cubs, and the Steelhead Trout by artist Paula Zima is a beloved piece of art, and it's taken several weeks to restore. During the pandemic, you know, we had to make lots of decisions. And one of the decisions we made is we didn't keep up with some of the maintenance on some of our artwork. And so this is one of the many pieces that we're trying to catch up on work. And so the bears are hibernating. You may have seen a sign out there. And we expect them to come back in the next couple weeks. And so we thank everyone for their patience. And if you always want to see and learn more about our artwork in our city, you can visit slowpublicart.org, and you can learn more about the city's art program and public art throughout our community. Moving next, I just want to share with the council our continued work on the January and March storms. And I think I've mentioned before, I think the count is we had 12 different atmospheric rivers that came through California, and many hit California with record amounts of rainfall here in San Luis Obispo, our county. I think the last time I checked, Rocky Butte was close to 100 inches. Reservoir Canyon was closing in on 60 inches. And so we've seen unprecedented levels of rainfall in our community. And so we have a number of areas where there was damage, particularly on the eastern bank of San Luis Creek near San Luis Drive. We are building a retaining wall there, and we just met onsite today with FEMA to do some investigatory work and look at that particular project. Our assertion is that that bank was really damaged following the January 9th event, and that really resulted in a destabilization of that facility. The fixes we have to do now were just exacerbated by the subsequent storms. So we're trying to expedite that work with FEMA. Also, as the council know, we removed a fair amount of debris. We've also taken the opportunity to remove some invasive trees that were plugging up some of the waterways. And so lastly, I'll just ask the community, if you notice any storm-related damage in San Luis Obispo, whether it's potholes, damaged sidewalks, drainage facilities, culverts, you can always do that via the Ask Slow app. Ask Slow, and if you go to the city's website, you can download it. I submitted two requests today. I got immediate responses for items. Yeah, I think we're up to nearly 2,000 submittals since we launched that program. It is the most efficient and effective way that the community can get issues in front of city staff, and we can get back to you promptly and look for a fix. And you can use the Storm Response category if you want to know specifically on how to submit those. I also just want to update the council where we are in the storm recovery process. And so staff has met with FEMA for a recovery scoping meeting, which formally kicked off our work. And we're obtaining our costs and the formulas for obtaining funding, so we can eventually start getting permits for the completed work and start our ground disturbing projects. We've done interviews for outside recovery consultants last week to help us assess the most expeditious and efficient way for us to recover all the funds that are available from both the state and federal government. And most costs of these services that we'll be using to hire this outside consultant are eligible for recovery through the FEMA Public Assistance Program. In terms of the March Storm Public Assistance Update, the governor did request a presidential major disaster on March 28th, and San Luis Obispo County unfortunately was not listed on the request, although that can change. County OES has submitted a request to CDA and to be added to the request for FEMA public assistance. And then the county is planning onsite visits with FEMA, CaliOS, on Wednesday, tomorrow, to view some high-profile sites to help substantiate the need for public assistance. And then we'll be showing them some of the locations that we've already talked about today, including a new one that emanated from the March storm, which is the Questa Drive locations. In terms of public works items, our priorities are addressing immediate concerns and begin the formal planning for the permanent fixes related to San Luis Drive. You may have seen a fair amount of traffic controls placed at the intersection of San Luis Drive and California Drive, and that's just to protect the traveling public from not using the sidewalk, and then to move the travel lanes back from the area that's been impacted from the high creek waters. We're continuing to bolster our documentation on prior and current work related to storm-related projects. And then we're refining our incurred and anticipated costs. We're also coordinating to see what costs for that the city has spent may be eligible for reimbursement from the California JPIA. We're still holding with, in total, about $9 million of total storm-related costs. And you may be asking and wondering, well, how are we going to pay for that? Fortunately, the city has set aside 20% of our operating budget as reserves, near $14 million. And so we have ample reserves there and there for this type of purpose. And our forecast that we'll be bringing to the council on April 18th, which is called Strategic Budget Direction, outlines the strategies by which we'll replenish those funds, which we expect and presume that we'll see reimbursement over the next two years from FEMA and from Cal OES. Last, I'll just share some news on everything that has been going on in the last few years, whether it was the pandemic, or storm events, or you name it. Right before we kicked off the pandemic, the city began its largest capital improvement project in its history. It was a $140 million Water Resource Recovery Facility or Waste Water Treatment Plan, and it's nearing completion. And it's in terms of a major project milestone, which includes the startup and commissioning of the new membrane bioreactor, or MBR, filter, and a UV disinfection system, which will significantly reduce the amount of chemicals that we have to use. And as you've been following a lot of the commodity markets, you probably know that chemicals are very expensive and in short supply and monopolized these days. And so we're really happy to move to a new technology. While the final project completion date is still approximately one year away, the milestone is a critical step in the project, and which will immediately result in a significant improvement of the quality of the water discharge in San Luis Obispo Creek. And you may recall, we were on a timed schedule order from the regional board to get this project completed, specifically in terms related to the quality of water that we were discharging into San Luis Creek. And so this is a huge milestone. The image depicted here is from mid-March, showing the membrane bioreactor construction and the utilization of 240-ton specialty crane that has been disassembled and removed from the site. And so it was large. You may have seen some air traffic control coordination and some other things to move that crane offsite. So this is a big deal. And as we get closer to full crossover, and we get eventually to full commissioning, we'll make sure we keep the council briefed. The good news through all of this is the talented team in utilities and finance and public works have kept this project on schedule and actually under budget. And so we're really proud. They anticipated a lot of the commodities and supply issues and ordered in advance. And so special thanks to Aaron and his team for making all that happen. So with that, Madam Mayor, that concludes my report for tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Every time we talk about the war, it's just amazing the amount of work that's happened and keeping everything on track during this time period where supply chains were an issue, and so many things were issues at this time. So thank you. Any questions from my colleagues? All right. I just have one question that, talking about the cougar, I know there's been conversations still about, well, is there another one? Should we worry? What should we do? So do you mind sharing a little bit more about that?
I'm going to bring an expert up, city biologist Freddie Adi. He can talk a little bit about this. And hopefully many of you had a chance to tune into the workshop. Maybe you can talk a little bit about the current situation and maybe help with the public about what to do if we do see a cougar otherwise.
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. So the update about the mountain lion, so it was captured, relocated, so we don't have to worry about that. California Department of Fish and Wildlife does still have the game cameras in Perfumo Creek just to monitor the situation and make sure there wasn't a second lion. There may have been earlier on, supposedly one was hit by a car on LVR, but nothing was ever found. So we're anticipating that was the only one that was onsite. And so hopefully it's going to stay east of here and not come back. As far as the coexisting with wildlife event that was last weekend, the Cougar Conservancy from Southern California came up to educate our community about some actions they can take to protect if there's wildlife, or ranchers, or something like that, to prevent the interaction with mountain lions. We had a really good discussion. California Department of Fish and Wildlife was not there, but like I say, just having another group come up to help educate our community about what's going on statewide to prevent these interactions was a great outcome of that event. So anything else I'm here for?
Great. Thank you so much. Well, now is the time, if you'd like to say something that is not on the agenda, grab your yellow slip and come over to the city clerk and share your name and what you'd like to talk about. Otherwise, I will go ahead and lend it over to city clerk.
Okay. I have to apologize. I missed Chris Rotabush for the proclamation, so I'm going to let her go ahead and go first. After that is Maria Kelly, and then Barry Price.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. Hello, Chris Rotabush here again from the We Are the Care Initiative in First Five Slow County. Every April, we celebrate Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month. In preparation for April 2023, we've taken some time to reflect on children in our world and the role that they play in their families here in our local community. First Five and We Are the Care are grateful to the City of San Luis Obispo for your prioritization of the needs of children and families in this community, which is where I get to call home, too. And for the foundation you are helping to build for a better childcare system for our families in Slow County overall, because we know that people don't just live here, they also work here and have childcare here as well. We value your continued interest in what children and families need and your shared commitment as a part of this movement. Since our last public comment, that We Are the Care Initiative moved its home from First Five County to the newly titled Early Care and Education Planning Council nested within the County Office of Education. Our group continues to advocate across the county to meet the needs for childcare, support development of childcare businesses, and the communities they serve, and works to uplift and build childcare workforce in Slow County. The families in our community have endured immense struggles over the past three years, and while there is hope in sight, the childcare challenge in this county is far from over. I'd like to encourage us all to use this Month of the Child to both reflect on successes and remind ourselves of the work left ahead. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. My name is Maria Kelly. I'm here this evening speaking on behalf of One Cool Earth as the Chair of the Board. I'm here to thank you for your grants and aid program. You've supported us several times over the last few years, most specifically recently for our garden party, which you are invited to on May 20th from 4:00 to 7:00 at the Botanical Gardens. A little bit about One Cool Earth. We are a next-generation science standard education program in elementary schools throughout the county, for specifically here in San Luis Obispo proper. A past grant allowed us to make sure that our curriculum was translated into Spanish. We do have bilingual programs in San Luis Obispo and throughout the county. Some highlights this last year, a grant from the county. We are now CalFresh advocates in helping support the distribution and signups of CalFresh programming due to our access to children and families within our school programs. And I just want to really thank you for your support, your ongoing grant programs. And I brought you an example of some of our work. This was a marine debris prevention best practices manual through a grant from NOAA. It did receive national recognition, and we continue to be partners and advocates of NOAA's work. We do a lot of grant writing to supplement the costs of these programs for our schools. And so anytime we can receive additional support, we're very, very grateful. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor Stewart, and council members Barry Price. And I'm here to thank you tonight for your work on housing and considering a variety of options for making the city a more vibrant place that's affordable for everybody. And you remember Jordan, who was here a couple of weeks ago? And he's a Cal Poly student, works in a local law office here, eats here, plays here, but he has to live with his parents in Nopomo because he can't afford to live here. And he spoke passionately about the lack of affordable housing. And I'm sure you've all heard other stories from other young people about the same situation. Jordan is not alone or unique in this. So at that same meeting two weeks ago, you also approved a proposed flexible density ordinance that some of our planners will create a more affordable housing downtown. I'm not here to rehash that last meeting, but to ask you now to take the next step and to build on that, to move the city to a more balanced and equitable housing market. While market rate developments might serve to increase density, we all seem resigned to the fact that they alone are not going to do anything to bring down prices, because housing demand is always going to outstrip supply here in San Luis Obispo. If we really want San Luis Obispo to be anything more than an enclave for the wealthy, more than just another Aspen, or Montecito, or Jackson Hole, the city's going to have to be a little more proactive in finding policy solutions to the housing mess. So I'm therefore asking that the council examine other policy options that you can implement to impact housing affordability in our city. And more specifically, I'm asking you to put on your agenda some time to study and consider actions that we might take as a community, specifically in the areas of taxation, and investment, and land use policy that have proven effective in many other communities. It meant a lot of other communities facing similar circumstances to ours, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We just have to discuss what the options are and figure out a way to implement those. So thank you again for your work on housing and on your leadership in moving us towards a more just and equitable housing market.
Thank you so much. And if you noticed us smiling up here when he was responding about someone's challenging housing situations, only because they're in the audience, we weren't smiling for their challenging situation. Just thought I'd mention that.
Anyone else? That was our last speaker.
Great. Thank you. Any comments necessary from staff on any of the public comment?
Madam Mayor, maybe Mr. Codrin come up and talk a little bit. We've got some exciting ideas coming forward, and I would really invite the speakers, if you're interested in Housing Poly, we'll have a work program coming on April 18th. We, of course, have got our housing element that was just adopted, which has got a whole variety of policies and strategies. Obviously, the tactics about how we get there, we want to engage the community. But I'll let Mr. Codrin talk a little bit about what's in store for the next couple weeks.
All right. Thank you, Derek. I'm Michael Codrin, Director of Community Development. And good afternoon, Mayor Stewart, and members of the council. I appreciate the comments and specifically ideas around taxation, policy, land use that are different than what we're doing right now. And there are a number of programs in the housing element. We're also bringing back to the city council a study session on the whole spectrum of housing types. And through implementation of our work program over the next two years, which includes quite a focus on supply and on being efficient with land use and not having, you know, the city grow outwards, but develop smart within our existing footprint. There are also, and there's also a need to look for other funding sources besides developer impact fees to support infrastructure provisions and other programs that we'll be looking at during the next two years as part of that work program. So to the extent that we can focus on supply, that we can help address the costs associated with infrastructure, and also consider some larger issues, larger questions, then I think we'll be closer to a solution. Ultimately, the speaker is correct. We're not seeing any affordable housing being constructed by the market here in San Luis Obispo. That's not true in other parts of California, but it is true for the most part in coastal California. So where there is this sort of insatiable demand of people to live in coastal California, that makes it extremely hard for the market to produce affordable housing. And so until housing is a right for all, until there's funding available for individuals to be able to afford housing and be in the location they want to be from other sources, then the only way we're producing affordable housing is really through these... we're producing affordable housing is really through these deed restrictions and through our affordable housing program. We're going to continue to work with the Housing Authority, with People Self Help Housing and others, to create as much of that deed restricted affordable housing as possible. And we're also seeing that in our market rate housing projects, that there is a component of affordable housing set aside. But I think that the Speaker is looking for a larger solution, and that's something we'll keep our eyes peeled for, that we'll be presenting solutions. And if there's direction from the City Council to do more on any of those fronts, then we will go ahead and pursue that as well. So, if there's any other questions for me, otherwise that would be my response.
Great, thank you so much. I appreciate you sharing about all the wonderful things that we're already kind of in process with.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving forward, we will be now talking about our consent agenda. So, if you have any questions about items that are on the consent agenda, please do bring your papers to the City Clerk. Otherwise, we'll go ahead and move forward. Vice Mayor Marks?
Yes, I don't want to pull any of these items, but I did have a question about 5D, the Legislative Action Program. I thought it was very well done, but there was one...
I actually want to pull that, not because I want to talk about it ad nauseam, just because I have some questions as well. So, yeah, then we can just do that last, if that's okay.
Perfect. What's up to you? You're the mayor.
Any other items to be pulled? Okay, I'm going to pull the Legislative Action Platform, just because I have some questions. I'd like to have some clarification from it, if that's okay. All right, so, any motion?
We have a public comment.
Oh, so sorry. I always skip that at this time. I apologize. City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Yes, on item 5D, Donna Harry Price, and then on item 5F, Bob Lavalley and Fitzgerald Kelly.
Thank you.
Also, thank you so much for the addition to the ledge platform, especially under the DEI category. And that item is support legislation related to implementation of the racial equity framework and resources and tools to promote racial equity and address structural racism. A Racial Equity Impact Assessment, REIA, is a systemic examination of how different racial and ethnic groups will likely be affected by a proposed action or decision. REIA's are used to minimize unanticipated adverse consequences in a variety of contexts, including the analysis of proposed policies, institutional practices, programs, plans, and budgetary decisions. The REIA can be a vital tool for preventing institutional racism and for identifying new options to remedy longstanding inequities. REIAs are used to reduce racial discrimination and prevent inequities. Thank you, Nestor and Council, for addressing this. Also, I want to thank you for adding Economic Development, Item 18, Support a Comprehensive Approach to Rental Protections, Renter Protections for Rental Housing. Sadly, in our tool of protections, we no longer have Mayor Marks's rental inspection program that supported renters and prevented them from living in untenable conditions. That is sadly gone. However, I do recommend that you consider adding a rent registry to your tool of protections for renters. A rent registry is a tool that will give us information and data about how many rentals there really are in Slow County, the real cost for rental averages. Instead of what we had happen two weeks ago, where we were Googling rent averages, both council members and commenters, looking at where it kind of fell, it would give us real information about that. And more importantly, it would also be able to track evictions. So, that would be one more tool in our arsenal to prevent evictions and keep people housed. Again, I look forward to these changes and the impact it will have on our great city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Lavalley and then Fitzgerald Kelly.
Good evening, council members, Mayor. I'd like to say hello to Jan Marks. Nice to see you. I'm here to express my concerns about the situation at Bouchon Street in Toro, which is the site of a proposed roundabout. Over the past five years, we've gone through various iterations in terms of traffic control there. I've lived there for about 22 years, and there has been an enormous increase in the volume of traffic, even considering or regardless of the fact that that is a residential neighborhood end to end, but has become the primary artery northbound to Johnson. In the last four years, I've personally witnessed four bicyclists hit, sprawled in the street. Shocking. And the response from, without pointing fingers, from the city has been that the speed bumps act as a detriment. That is absolutely not the case. I am responsible for maintenance at that site, so I'm always, not always, but frequently outside. And so, I witness that stream of traffic on a daily basis. And I can tell you, it's become a glorified racetrack. You would not believe the speed at which vehicles are crossing that speed bump. I think it could be safely said that 50% of the traffic there is exceeding the 25 mile an hour's speed limit. It's an extremely dangerous situation. I'm here because, two weeks ago, I'm sitting at my desk, which fronts the window, so I have a view of the street, and it's after dark, and I'm alerted by a thump. And I think, what is that? And so, I open the door and proceed out into the street, across the street, and there's a woman lying in the street. I don't think I'm an overly sensitive person, but that really brought it home to me. The lady that hit her had turned right on Toro in an easterly direction. You know, there's no impediment to stop there. So, she said to me, I didn't see her. Like any normal UMB, I was prompted to ask this woman, kind of silly, you know, are you all right? But for want of something else to say. And she said to me, I can't feel my legs. And that really hit me. It infuriated me, because we've been playing this game with Public Works now for five years, and the solutions have been presented as somewhat complicated. But really, if you live there, you would realize that the simplest, the least expensive solution...
I'm so sorry, but we passed the three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Cut you off. I apologize. But I really thank you for sharing your experiences and what you're seeing.
Okay, I would only hope that you would encourage Public Works to place stop signs on Bouchon. It's the least expensive and most effective...
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Fitzgerald Kelly?
Hi, my name is Fitzgerald Kelly, and I live at 1110 Bouchon. And I live right next to the intersection of Bouchon and Santa Rosa. It's a very loud intersection. It is really loud. But Public Works has told us that they are going to install a roundabout up on Toro. And it looks like it's going to be a permanent structure. And I would certainly suggest that the council direct Public Works to certainly draw where the circle is going to be. And then, if there's, then see how that works, and then put in something temporary that can be easily removed if it doesn't work. And if it doesn't work, we'd like to be able to remove it completely and go for another remediation of that intersection. Because, as this man just said, that street is really busy and it's really loud. So, we'd like you to direct Public Works to work with us this time. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. That's it? Okay, thank you so much. City Manager, do you want to share a little bit about this, or would you like to bring up someone else?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, so, we've been on an extensive process for looking at traffic calming on Bouchon for a number, number of years. And we had to put a little bit on hold during the pandemic. And so, we reinvigorated that project recently in response to a lot of requests. Went through a whole exercise with the neighborhood, ultimately, through a process in which they voted in and decided which kind of measures. I invite Mr. Schwartz to come up and talk about some of the outcomes we've seen from some of the measures we've implemented. We've been fairly successful with the speed bumps. They've significantly reduced speeds. And we looked at a variety of different traffic controls in that intersection. And based upon, you know, our assessment, Luke can talk a little bit about how we arrived at the proposal that's in front of the council tonight.
Testing, hearing. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. As City Manager Johnson mentioned, this has been a planning process that's been ongoing for more than a decade. It started with a traffic calming planning effort for the Pismo and Bouchon corridors and as a whole. At the time, speed humps and elements were proposed on both streets. Ultimately, the neighborhood had voted against the speed humps on Bouchon at that time. We came back about five or six years ago as a request of the neighborhood saying, hey, we still have some ongoing traffic concerns. Can we revisit this? And with that, in 2018, we recommended, through additional meetings with the neighborhood, additional data collection, a plan that included installation of speed humps along the segments, as well as a neighborhood traffic circle at the intersection with Toro that we're discussing tonight. It ultimately was implemented in two phases due to some budget constraints and design challenges with some grades at the intersection. The speed humps have reduced the speeds. They've come down from about 28 miles an hour beforehand to the prevailing speeds now are under 25. They're actually around 21, 22 as a whole. I'm sure you'll see a rogue vehicle that will bypass them or speed through, but as a whole, the speeds have come down. At that particular intersection, though, we're still seeing some concerns about people speeding between the humps and fast turning maneuvers, and that's where the traffic circle, we believe, is the right solution. They've been shown both nationally in the data published by the Federal Highway Administration, other groups, to improve safety for all users, particularly with slowing speeds and forcing kind of drivers to navigate the intersections at a slower pace. We've seen similar results in the city at other locations where we've installed traffic circles, both on Chora Street, south of downtown, where we did a pilot installation with temporary materials that has worked well. And more recently, was part of the summer paving project this last year, where we've collected speed data before, afterwards, and seen the speeds come down, both through the intersection and block. Regarding, we've had requests from some folks in the neighborhood saying, can you just put in always stops? There are state guidelines we have to follow with installing traffic circles, stop signs, things like that. And they specifically say you shouldn't be installing stop signs just for the purpose of slowing traffic, and that there's a series of checks you need to look at that are based on volumes, collision history, site distance, before you can decide to do an always stop. And that's something we looked at early on at this location and found it didn't meet the thresholds that we would typically follow based on that state guidance to move forward with an always stop. So, that's the reason why the traffic circle is an approach that we're recommending moving forward with. I'm happy to answer if there's other questions on the designs for this neighborhood or any of the past planning process to get to this point.
Thank you. And the Speaker did ask about kind of a quick build temporary turnaround, a roundabout, sorry. I can't imagine how that would work on a temporary basis, but is that something that's a possibility?
That's essentially what we did on Chora Street, south of the downtown. The challenge is, is materials have a limited lifespan, so you're duplicating the effort of not only getting the design right, but maintaining them. And then ultimately, the intent is you replace them with permanent materials. Another thing that's a little challenging at this location is there are some elements that do need to be rebuilt. So, there's an existing speed table that was installed 10-plus years ago that doesn't meet our current standards. It hasn't been that effective. The fire staff don't like it with navigating over the trucks. So, there's still costs that would be, the bigger cost with this project is getting the curb ramps up to grade. There's a cross gutter that's failing with drainage and removing that existing speed hump. So, you could potentially do it in a way where the circle itself is temporary, but most of the cost would still be built in in getting the intersection set up for pedestrians and drainage as part of that effort.
Great, thank you. Vice Mayor Marks?
Yes. I've also, just from what I've read in the paper, it's been pointed out that there's a problem at that corner because it's so dark. It's hard to see, say, a pedestrian. Is there any plan, I don't know if that's part of a traffic issue, but is there any plan to improve lighting there?
Not as part of this project. We do, it's something we looked at, and there is a street light at the intersection, which is, the city standards for local streets is to provide at least one street light. So, it's meeting our standards. Obviously, it'd be nice if you could light every corner. And that's certainly something we look at as part of our new street light program, which prioritizes lights in neighborhoods near parks on future neighborhood greenways, which Toro is a future neighborhood greenway plan. So, one of the benefits of this is it not only helps with slowing speeds now, but will help with additional bike and pet crossings that we expect in the long term. It's not part of this, but it's certainly something we'd be happy to look into if that's a location that would meet our prioritization as we're putting in new lights throughout the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Member Schorsman?
I was going to say that I'm prepared to move approval of the consent agenda. I don't know now. I'm hearing if there's, is there anybody that wants to pull this item for further discussion? Or, okay, so I'm prepared to move approval of the consent agenda, minus the one item that the mayor was going to pull.
Okay, we do have two more comments, I think, before that. Sorry, they weren't on there earlier. Vice Mayor Marks?
No, I just wanted to talk about 5D when the moment is right.
Okay, Councilwoman Pease?
I just wanted to acknowledge that there was staff correspondence about the 5F. So, just confirming that your motion includes the amended motion for financial authorization. And then I'll second that.
Yes, it included that.
Correct, thanks.
Thank you both. City Clerk, can we have roll call?
Councilmember Schorsman?
Yes.
Councilmember Pease?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes, and the motion passes 5-0. Thank you to Luke Schwartz for sharing the information about 5F. Okay, and then 5D, Legislative Action Platform, Vice Mayor Marks?
Yes, I just had a question about item 16, which is supporting legislation, making it legal for bicycles not to stop at stop signs. And I tried to look it up. It's evidently the National Association of City Transportation officials think that's a good idea. I personally don't think it's a good idea, because I don't want to run anybody over. And sometimes bicycles don't stop at stop signs anyway, and sometimes they don't stop at red lights anyway. And I'm not saying ever... And I'm not saying every, many bicycles do, but a lot of them don't. And so I'm just, I guess my question is, for the bicycle advocates here on city council and elsewhere, is why is this a good idea? Somebody explain that to me, so.
So that is something that they actually then, NACTO encourages. And it's not that you can just run stop signs. It's that if you roll up to a stop sign and the intersection is clear, you can roll through at a reasonable speed. So it's not being able just to roll through any intersection at any time. And the idea is that you slow, you roll up to it instead of coming to a complete stop, you can see that both of the other lanes are clear and that you can make a safe crossing. This has some DEI components to it as well. It's been shown in some studies that the, that officers in some communities are more likely to stop people of color for this infraction. And so this is, that's another reason why they recommend it.
Madam Mayor, if we could have Mr. Schwartz just talk a little bit. I think there's some states, Idaho has some data on this. So Mr. Schwartz, if you wouldn't mind just addressing some of the, there's some data around accidents and what it's done in terms of safety.
Sure. The transportation group's been following this, the potential bill as well, both locally and in other states. It's already been approved in Idaho, Colorado, Delaware. And it's actually gone through the state legislature and passed twice with the governor vetoing it both times. And one of the concerns was about younger riders being able to make that decision of how do I navigate the intersection safely? And my understanding is the latest proposal exempts riders under 18 of age from the ability to treat an always, a stop sign as a yield. But it seems counterintuitive, but the data from states that have already made this legal have shown that it didn't create a negative impact on safety. In fact, they had fewer collisions at locations where that applied. And one of the reasons is not, so you can just blow through an intersection at full speed, that would still be illegal. It's basically give you almost like a head start so that you're more visible to drivers that are making turns at the intersection. So other states have been doing it. My guess is it continues to get, work its way through the state legislature. And we're not, California would not be the first to follow this policy. And it's been used elsewhere and the data is generally positive.
Thank you. It sounds similar to the jaywalking that was approved in January where you can't just jaywalk for the heck of it if you're gonna put someone in danger, but if there's no one around, you can.
Right. It's almost removing the ability to be ticketed on a behavior that people are doing because they feel like it's a safe way to act if they're doing it in a responsible way.
Got it, thank you. Councilor please.
Thank you, just to add on to that, because this was, this was an addition that I brought. And again, in reading that data from the other states is that, again, counterintuitively, but there's a safety thing about momentum. So especially for weaker riders to have to come to a full and complete stop and then get rolling again, it was actually a little bit riskier. So to be able to have a softer roll and not, and have that be legal was actually, they were finding increased safety.
Any other questions, Vice Mayor?
Okay, I have a few. I guess really it's probably questions for the subcommittee. But, so on the Climate Action section, page 199, it seems to me that item 2 and item 4 are relatively similar. One is funding and one is advocacy, I guess. So it just seemed like they were kind of the same thing. And I just wondered why you wanted to separate the two. 2 and 4, sorry. 2 is supporting funding and 4 was supporting advocacy. It seemed kind of this.
That is actually our Sustainability Department, I believe. That was their requested wording. Do you have other insights on that?
Yeah, that was requested by Sustainability Committee or Sustainability Department. And that's existing language. I don't believe that changed much and that they wanted to keep those separate. Just gives a little bit more leeway and confirmation so that when I have to go to our city attorney and say, hey, I want to support this, I've got a direct clarification.
Okay, thank you. And then on page 201, I think I just really wanted to make sure I asked this question in public for the city attorney. I very much appreciate the concept of expanding California Voting Rights Act possibilities to open participation and representation. And if district elections were to happen, we would still have to put this out to the public to vote because it's in our charter, right? This Legislative Action, Legislative Platform doesn't change that charter aspect.
No, there, there is a provision in our charter that calls for at-large elections. We are in discussions with opposing council. There's also some case law out there suggesting that that can be overwritten. And so not entirely clear, but our current position is that that would need to be a charter amendment ultimately that goes forward. The question is whether that is a conforming charter amendment that could follow a statutory compliance with CIVRA to go to district elections if that were the course of action that everyone determined was warranted based on the data.
Okay, thank you so much. And then as far as, I think actually one of the speakers spoke about this, on page 205, number 17, the supporting the increased relocation assistance when a tenant is evicted due to no fault of their own, which I definitely am supportive of. And I'm just curious why AB 1482 is to be identified in this, or can we just say this without identifying only that one bill?
AB 1482 is the reason that they have that relocation assistance requirement. So I referenced the bill that previously created the requirement for relocation assistance.
Great, thank you so much. Councilmember Francis?
I was just gonna follow up on that one since that was one that I'd requested be added in. So that doesn't limit us in having the language that references the existing bill in, in this update. That doesn't limit what we can advocate for, just to clarify.
I don't believe so, but Christine, I'm just referencing a bill to allow relocation assistance because that's the state law that created that opportunity to say that this is what we're advocating for, not saying it limits us.
No, I think the, the bulk of the platform language is crafted so as to expand alternatives, not to commit the city to any particular course of action, but to make the, broaden the scope available for the council's consideration and policy direction.
Great, thank you. I was just worried that would narrow it instead of if there was more in the future. Councilmember Shoresman?
So just to clarify, are we leaving that reference in or are we taking it out? Okay. Yeah, my two, two things that I just wanted to ask about this, and I raised it with staff previously, so I'll bring it up for the record. I had asked for a clarification or footnote on, in the one item that references the racial equity platform as a capitalized term in the way it's written. And I went ahead and just Googled the term and found all sorts of things for definitions and concepts for racial equity platform. And so I asked that the particular reference be footnoted so that we have some clarity around what that actually is referring to. And then I also wanted to ask about the item just below the one that you just asked about, Mayor. And I believe this is what our member of the public was commenting about, number 18 on page 205, support a comprehensive approach to renter protections for rental housing. I just wondered, you know, I guess this is a clarification point again, what we mean by comprehensive approach. Do we want to clarify that at all or just leave it wide open where it is?
Can I respond first to the first part of it?
Yeah.
Racial equity framework is a reference to California Executive Order, which I have a number for. I will put that into the footnote so that it's clearly identified what executive order we're working with. It's established that the Racial Equity Commission, commission is tasked with producing the racial equity framework consisting of resource and tools for racial equity and address structural racism. So I'll put that into a footnote on the final platform.
Thank you, that would be great. That was my question before too. Councilmember Francis?
Councilmember Shoresman, the comprehensive approach was intended to be expansive in dealing with single-family homes, not just multifamily homes where a lot of the rental protections currently exist. And so I believe that the language here was meant to expand our support for legislation that would also apply to single-family homes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not sure, okay, I'm fine with it the way it is. I just wondered if that should be clarified.
Totally open to modification of language here to make it more clear.
City manager?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, this conversation's instructive for the record. So we've got the legislative record, we know what the intent was. So I think the intent has been expressed. We understand that as staff and the mayor will use that intent then moving forward.
Thank you. Two more questions. To care my diversity question, there you go. Page 205, the Zoom meetings question, I just, simply because I asked this of staff before, I figured I would ask the same thing since we haven't actually had the conversation yet and it's on our agenda in the future about Zoom meetings, will we do them or not? I was curious about it being in our Legislative Action Platform already. So city attorney, do you mind sharing?
The Brown Act, many provisions of the Brown Act regarding remote meeting participation were suspended during COVID. Recently, there's been a substantial contraction of the, of the circumstances under which there can be remote participation by council members. I think that a lot of jurisdictions are finding that unduly confining restrictive without a huge transparency upside that seems to be apparent. And so what we are suggesting is that we advocate for consideration of some more reasonable expansions of the remote participation options consistent with the Brown Act.
Great, thank you so much. Councilor please?
I just wanted to add to that one that we are also really looking at statewide or regional bodies. So, right, so Coast Rail Coordinating Council is, you know, six different counties. So to be able to have, and they're still subject to the Brown Act. So to be able to provide opportunities for remote meetings is aligned with a lot of our goals as well.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I know we're going to, some of us are going to Pomona for CalCities conference and it'd be great to have that in hybrid aspects, so. Okay, I think that was all of my questions. So thank you so much for listening and asking and answering. And otherwise, I am ready to support this motion.
I'd like to move the staff recommendation for 5D.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, along with the footnote, correct?
Along with everything that we said, yes.
Perfect, thank you. Councilmember Shoresman?
I'll second the move, the approval of 5D.
Thank you. Can we have roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Shoresman?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Councilmember please?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes, the motion passes 5-0. Thank you so much. Okay, next we move into the business item of reviewing the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to deny the development of property at 841 Patricia Drive. And I'm going to ask each council member, starting with Vice Mayor Marks, for their ex parte disclosures of contact with anyone that provided information to council members not on the record so that information may be used as part of your decision-making process or not.
Madam Mayor, before, before the council begins its disclosures, can I also just request that if you learned any subsequent information through meetings with staff that is not in the record and that might inform your consideration of this item, please also disclose that additional information?
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor Marks?
I had no ex parte contact with any of the appellant. And I did read this agenda correspondence the staff has generated since then.
Thank you. Councilmember Shoresman?
I don't have any ex parte and same as Vice Mayor Marks, just ask questions and receive the agenda correspondence.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Francis?
I did meet with the Michaels family and their team and then also read the agenda correspondence.
Thank you. Councilor please?
I met on site with the Michaels and Carol Florence. There was no new information that hadn't already been shared.
Thank you. And I too met with Carol and Julie Michaels on the property. And there was nothing in addition to what is already in the staff report. I met with a 221, meaning two staff members and myself. So I don't really think it's a 221, it means a 21. And there was nothing in addition to what's in the staff report. So thank you for that clarification, also city attorney. And I believe we are ready for the report.
Yes.
Good, well, the item before you is an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to deny the architecture review application regarding development of the property at 841 Patricia Drive. Property has a creek corridor that runs through it and the application includes a request for a creek setback exception or an exception from the creek setback requirements. Given the interest shown by comments and inquiries received on the project and the importance the city places on protection of natural resources, the director referred this application to the Planning Commission for their consideration and action. On January 25th, Planning Commission reviewed the application, including the information in the application provided by the applicant and staff's evaluation of the project. And the commission denied the application.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm just checking in with our clerk. Are we, is there a slide deck that we're supposed to be showing?
I forgot the share screen. I know I would do that. Thank you, Dave. Luckily, this is the second slide. So on January 25th, the commission reviewed the application, including the information provided by the applicant and staff's evaluation of the project. And the commission denied the application, finding the project to be inconsistent with the general plan, policies, and community design guidelines, in particular because four of the eight required findings for a creek setback exception could not be made. As the application lacked clear and substantiated evidence that redesign of the project to more fully protect the creek resource was in some way feasible, that the project design would minimize impacts to creek resources, or that a redesign of the project would deny reasonably use of the property. The applicants, Eric and Julie Michaels, appealed the commission's decision on February 1st, and that's the item that is before you now. As described in the appeal, which was provided as an attachment to the staff report for this item, the applicants contend that the project was improperly denied and that all required findings for a creek setback exception can and must be made by the city council. However, no additional evidence in support of the required findings was included in the applicant, in the appeal as filed. Subsequent correspondence has been provided to the city council by the appellant and the appellant's representing attorney, further explaining the nature of their appeal. And staff in turn provided correspondence with relevant information and response to help focus discussion and consideration of the, on the, of the issues pertinent to this appeal, which are also discussed in this presentation. Staff will be recommending that based on the absence of evidence in support of the required creek setback finding, exception findings, that the council uphold the decision of the Planning Commission denying the architecture review application by adoption of the draft resolution provided for this item. The property is in the northwest area of the city. It lies west of Highway 1 and north of Westmont Avenue. It's Lot 63 of Farini Heights, which is an 86 lot residential subdivision that was approved in 1985. The site is a bit less than one and a half acres in area, 1.41 acres. It is in a flaglock configuration situated behind single-family homes on Patricia Court, Patricia Drive, and Twin Ridge Drive, all bordering this property. It has, takes its access from Patricia Drive and a creek corridor and a 30-foot wide drainage easement run in a southeasterly direction through the property. The creek is depicted in the general plan and symbolized as a perennial creek with degraded corridor but able to be restored or repaired. Also depicted in the general plan is a generalized wildlife corridor, which is drawn as traveling through this area. And on the western portion of the site, the applicant proposes to build a two-story single-family dwelling. The western portion of the site is what you see on the bottom photos. The eastern portion on the other side of the creek channel, it's proposed to construct a single-story accessory dwelling unit. And that is the upper right-hand photos you see there with the, the applicant's representative and city staff. The primary dwelling includes a garage, utility room, and greenhouse area, has a swimming pool and outdoor barbecue amenities to the east of the building. has a swimming pool and outdoor barbecue amenities to the east of the building, oriented internally to the site. And the ADU has an outdoor fireplace and patio amenity with a privacy wall that's about five or six feet in height. To connect the primary dwelling to the ADU, it's proposed to install an access bridge for pedestrians and vehicles across the creek channel. As proposed, the bridge is about 12 feet wide and it spans 55 feet between two concrete abutments. It's about 18 inches in depth and it's situated about two and a half feet above the ground, topped with a steel decked surface. As shown in project plans, it's this access bridge, its abutments, and the associated paving which encroach into the required creek setback and which are the subject of the creek setback exception request that are included with the application. The general plan sets out several goals and policies regarding protection and enhancement of creek resources and how they relate to residential development. These are summarized on this screen and are discussed in fuller detail in the staff report. These include preservation or even creation of continuous wildlife habitat, including corridors free of human disruption. Residential development is to respect site constraints with riparian corridors identified as features of particular importance to wildlife. And to implement these policies, creek setback standards are set out in zoning regulations. And as described in these regulations, these setbacks are intended to protect the natural creekside habitat and further the restoration of degraded habitat, especially where a continuous riparian habitat corridor can be established. Setbacks apply to all creeks defined and shown in the open space element map that we saw earlier. And here, a 20-foot creek setback applies to this property. Creek setbacks are usually measured from the top of a creek bank but can also be measured from the edge of the associated riparian vegetation. And this is diagrammed in zoning regulations. Here, the creek channel is shallow with indistinct banks. So the setback here is measured from the edge of the riparian vegetation. That is shown here in the plans, along with the resulting creek setback. And so here, the middle green arrows pointing in two directions represents basically the area between the edge of the creek vegetation. And then the outer arrows delineate where the creek setback extends to on this site. Plans show that the proposed dwelling and ADU are situated outside of the setback but that the access bridge with its abutments and associated paving encroaches into and through the setback area. Exceptions to creek setbacks may be considered and approval of such exceptions are subject to the eight required findings that are shown here. Exceptions can only be approved where an applicant provides clear and substantiated evidence that there's no practical way to comply with the setback provisions and that no other feasible alternatives will allow reasonable use of the site. And on review of the plans and the application information provided, staff did not encounter any compelling evidence that either of these circumstance exist in this case. And recommended that in the absence of such information in support of the required findings, that the Planning Commission should deny the application. Four of the findings in particular are not supported by the application record and these findings could not be made by the Planning Commission in their decision. I'll step through these four, taking them somewhat out of order. Finding number four addresses the presence of special circumstances that might apply to a site, which wouldn't generally apply to land in the vicinity and which would thereby deprive the property of privilege that's enjoyed by other properties. And while aspects of this lot do differ from those of typical lots in the area, such as its larger size and its irregular shape and the presence of the creek channel traveling through the lot, which complicates development of the eastern portion of the lot. However, the western portion of this lot, west of the vegetation line, is, it's a portion connected to Patricia Drive and this portion measures more than 24,000 square feet in area. We find this to be considerably larger than the 10,000 to 15,000 square foot lot sizes typical of surrounding lots. And we note that it's four times larger than the 6,000 square foot minimum lot area applicable in the R1 zone. Here, permitted land uses for all these properties is limited to single-unit dwelling and associated accessory structures, which could include accessory dwelling units. And physical development of these properties in the vicinity are subject to all the same development standards, such as building setbacks, building height limits, lot coverage limitations, and creek setbacks. In this respect, the property appears to be subject to substantially the same circumstances, conditions, and privileges as other property within this low-density residential zone. And then neither the creek channel nor the easements present on the property deprive the opportunity of development of this property with a single-family dwelling and associated accessory structures in the manner enjoyed by other property in the vicinity. No other circumstances have been identified that would deprive the owner the ability to develop the lot in such a manner. So that's finding four regarding special circumstances. Finding seven is concerned with whether site development can be feasibly accomplished without redesign, I'm sorry, with a redesign of the project. Here, the main elements of this project are the primary dwelling on the west side, the ADU on the east side, and the access bridge between them. A redesign of the project would most obviously focus on the location of the ADU relative to the dwelling and the provisions for accessing the ADU from the dwelling, since it is the access bridge to the ADU along with its related paving that encroach into the creek setback and which is a subject of the creek setback exception request. In the application materials, the applicant argues that redesign of the project, by for example, placing the ADU on the western portion of the property, such that a bridge would not be necessary, would render the project infeasible as doing so would result in more site-grading disturbance and would affect other sensitive areas of the site. This is as described in attachments to the report in response to staff's request for further information on these items. But beyond this general assertion, no details have been provided that demonstrate where or why this additional site grading would be necessary with a redesign or that any such additional grading would be infeasible. And the sensitive areas of the site that would be affected by such additional grading have not been identified. And so the application record does not establish that the eastern portion of the site is the only feasible location for an ADU or that a 12-foot vehicle, 12-foot-wide vehicle bridge is the only feasible means to provide necessary access to that portion of the site. That is finding seven about redesign of the project. In the same spirit of that finding, finding eight aims to preserve reasonable use of property where a redesign of a project would otherwise deny it. So here, development of a single-family dwelling and associated accessory structures consistent with applicable development standards would represent reasonable use of property in this zone. The applicant has contended that the limiting access to or use of the eastern portion of the lot would conflict with state law regarding the establishment of ADUs and that there would be no reasonable use of the eastern portion of the site without an access bridge across the creek. But in response, staff notes that this finding speaks to reasonable use of the entire property as a whole and not necessarily to use of particular individual portions of it. And as to California state law regarding ADUs, that law is intended to facilitate and encourage establishment of ADUs. And it does provide for relaxation of development standards to do so. But it limits that kind of relaxation of standards to situations where the development standards in question would outright preclude the establishment of an ADU on a property. State law doesn't mandate that an ADU must be allowed on any or all portions of a site. In this case, there is no evidence that redesign of the project for consistency with the creek setback requirements would preclude establishment of an ADU on, for example, the western portion of the property or that it would deny a reasonable use of the property as a whole. In terms of the use of the site for residential development as proposed under the application, staff notes that lot coverage standards limit the area of building footprint which may cover a site. In calculating lot coverage, the area of building footprint is compared to the net lot area of the site. So determine how much building footprint can go on a site. We need to know what the net lot area is. And let's see. So net lot area is the total area within the property lines excluding certain areas, including creek areas, i.e. between creek banks or between edges of vegetarian. The net lot in their area in this case is the portion of the site represented by the, I'm sorry, I typed this wrong. I'm not sure what this was meant to say. But I think I made the point about the net lot area informing the lot coverage calculation. In the R1 zone, the maximum permitted lot coverage is 40%. That is, in this case, 40% of the lot area outside of the creek and vegetation. It's worth noting that the floor area of an accessory dwelling unit is excluded from lot coverage limitations for up to 800 square feet of its building footprint. Hopefully, this slide clarifies some of that. In this slide, we see that when the creek area in blue is subtracted from the total lot area of this site, the resulting net lot area is just over 38,000 square feet. And this area is outlined here in orange on either side of the property, on either side of the creek. The portion of the net lot area lying east of the creek is nearly 13,500 square feet in area. So that's the orange portion up on the upper right-hand side. And this comprises just over 20% of the total lot area. As seen earlier, nearly 25,000 square feet of net lot area is situated west of the creek. So that's that lower area with the primary residence. Both of these portions of net lot area are subject to required creek setbacks in the same manner as any property adjacent to the creek. So moving to the, more specifically to this eastern portion of the site within the net lot area east of the creek, the buildable area is constrained to an eccentric and narrow area between the creek setback line and the sewer easement. Here, the creek setback line is a green dotted line. The sewer easement is something of a purple line, which may be difficult to make out, but it's 15 feet from the back of the property there. This is depicted in the slide as a shaded area in the middle of the property. That's the area that's available for building and building footprint. Rough measurements that are taken from the plans indicate that this area would measure approximately 4,000 square feet. And that would represent somewhere around 10% of the net lot area. Now, because lot coverage is calculated from the net area of the entire site, the amount of lot coverage allowed is not affected by whether or not structures are constructed on particular portions of the property. So if it is not feasible to build on certain area of the site, lot coverage allows for additional building footprint to be located elsewhere on the site. It doesn't reduce your total allowed building footprint. You could, for example, if 40% is the lot coverage limitation, if on one side of the property you cannot build 40% worth, you may be able to build 50 or 60% coverage on another part of the site as long as the total building footprint does not exceed the 40% lot coverage limit. Because most of the footprint of the proposed ADU is excluded from lot coverage calculation, in this case, we're really only concerned, we're really only talking about 25 feet of building footprint at issue in the first place on this site. And so with all these factors in mind, and as noted earlier, the Planning Commission found that there was no evidence that redesign of the project to conform to the creek setback standards would deny reasonable use of the property in this case. So each of those above findings encourage feasible project design where there are no practical ways to comply with creek setback standards. And then this first finding, finding number one, further provides that in cases where exceptions from creek setbacks may be appropriate, that impacts to riparian habitat are to be minimized. So to this end, a biological resource assessment was prepared by David Wolf Environmental for this application, which documents the existing site conditions and evaluates the potential for significant impacts on biological wet pet land or riparian resources or adverse effects on rare, threatened, or endangered plants or wildlife species. The assessment describes the creek corridor, supports willow or oil willow thicket habitat with coast live oak trees, leaf maple, planted sycamore, and that it can provide habitat for wildlife adapted to urban environments. It acknowledges that other wildlife use is likely limited, being surrounded by urban development, and that the site does not represent any specific migratory or movement corridor for wildlife. There is low potential for special species status plant, I'm sorry, there's a low potential for special status plant and wildlife species to occur at the site, given the lack of suitable habitat conditions for them. Nevertheless, staff notes that the finding from zoning regulations is more broadly concerned with minimization of impacts to the riparian habitat in general and the opportunities for use by wildlife that it may take advantage of it, including those adapted to the urban environment, whether or not they're considered to be threatened or endangered. As there's no clear and substantiated evidence supporting the findings discussed so far regarding feasibility of project redesign or denial of reasonable use of the property, it does not appear that an exception would be appropriate in this case since opportunity likely exists for project redesign to conform to creek setback standards to avoid impacts to the creek channel and riparian vegetation as directed by this finding number one. A 12-foot-wide steel bridge across the corridor would not constitute minimal impact under this finding, given that it does interrupt the creek corridor, that it does involve removal and replanting elsewhere of existing riparian vegetation, and that it involves ongoing use of the bridge by pedestrians and vehicles crossing over the creek between dwellings on the property. Also relevant to this application are Community Design Guidelines for Creekside Development. And according to this guideline, there should be no structures, roads, parking access, parking spaces, or paved areas constructed within a creek setback area and no grading or filling or removal of native vegetation shall occur. Here, the proposed bridge structure with its paved areas, access to vehicle parking areas, and grading and fill for the bridge abutments are not consistent with this guidance. On a more positive, oops. On a more positive note, staff does note that the project was reviewed for conformance to other relevant development standards and design guidelines as discussed in the staff report and found that it is designed in a manner consistent with the city's flood control provisions as it provides two feet of freeboard above the 100-year flood level. Notwithstanding the request for the creek setback exception, the project is consistent with development standards for such things as lot coverage limitations, building setbacks, and building height limits. In architectural form and style, the proposed buildings are compatible with existing development by use of conventional residential exterior materials, roof forms, window spacing, colors, and detailing, and attention to site layout and design of window orientation and outdoor use areas to minimize potential privacy impacts as described in Community Design Guidelines for Infield Development. And finally, as to the environmental review prepared for the project, normally, single-family residential development is exempt from the provisions of CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. But in this case, this project could not be determined to be exempt from environmental review because of the site's relationship to the creek and wildlife corridor features mapped and depicted in the general plan. And so CEQA initial study was conducted to evaluate the potential for significant environmental impacts under CEQA and concluded that the impacts under CEQA could be mitigated, reduced to a less than significant level by incorporation of certain mitigation measures into the project. And so the environmental documentation, including those measures, have been provided as an attachment to the staff report as this documentation would need to be considered and incorporated into any action that would approve the project. However, an action denying the project is exempt from CEQA as described in the staff report and the draft resolution, noted here in this slide as Section 15270 of CEQA Guidelines for projects which are disapproved. So in summary, based on the information materials provided with the application and staff's evaluation of the proposed project, the Planning Commission did deny this application because the required findings for the requested creek setback exception could not be made. And therefore, the project could not be found to be consistent with general plan goals and policies for protection of natural resources and for residential development with the creek setback provisions of zoning regulations or with Community Design Guidelines for Creekside Development. And as the application still lacks evidence in support of all those required creek setback findings and the appeal file did not provide clear and substantiated evidence in support of those findings, staff recommends that the council uphold the commission's decision denying the Arch- denying the architectural review application. Staff would recommend, however, that the denial be made without prejudice to allow for a timely resubmital of a revised application, should the appellant and applicant wish to do so, to preserve that possibility so that they don't have to wait six months to file a similar application and so forth. Alternatively, the council could continue consideration of this item with direction to the staff and applicant. Staff does not recommend this alternative because the evidence provided with the application does not support the required findings for approval of a setback exception for this project. So that concludes my presentation, and I thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for staff.
Thank you. Councilmember Francis.
Yeah, thank you very much. I know some of this was addressed in the staff correspondence earlier, but I was wondering if you could speak to some of the images that we saw of other creek crossings in the community that have been used for residential access.
There were several examples brought up in the appellant's representing attorney's memo, and all but one of those had consideration dates that predated the city's creek setback provisions and zoning regulations. And so the record really lacks any illumination of what the logic was behind allowing, for example, the access driveways that you see accessing those properties. One of them was reviewed and built in 2006. However, it used a driveway that already existed at that time that had been approved earlier. We know that protection of a creek setback area has long been a policy of the city, but that at the same time, there have been provisions to allow for such things as creek crossing in cases where there is no other alternative. And I think the pictures, the aerial photos themselves, show that that is the case in all of those examples, that given the layout of the site and the position of the creek, if you could not make a creek crossing at that locations, there would not be an ability to develop those sites. That's what we saw in those examples.
Sorry. And could you tell me when the creek setback ordinance was passed?
1996.
Okay. And those are all my questions for now. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Shoresman.
Yes, there was a question or two. I realized as you were talking that I asked of staff offline and was not addressed in the correspondence, so I wanted to ask those questions again so that everybody else hears the answers. One of them was that one of our, some of the agenda correspondents that we received from the public suggested that we place a conservation easement on the property to preserve the area on the, I guess it would be the east side of the creek. And my question to staff was, is that even possible, that we could sort of mandate that? So wondered if you could address that.
Mayor, council members, Brian LaVell, senior planner. Yeah, just to address that question, that type of action wouldn't be within the scope of the council's review this evening. It's also hard to kind of picture a scenario where a property that already has the existing zoning that's been there for quite some time, where there'd be a potential option for the city council to do that. So it's not looking like there is that as an option.
The other question that I asked was, you know, based on what we're seeing, the way the property is laid out, and that the main issue seems to be the bridge essentially, is there a way to develop this space with the ADU on the other side of the creek without the creek setback exception?
While we're limited in our ability to really run the different permutations in design, we essentially do not see a way because any of that would require a structure to cross this creek channel, and that by itself triggers the need for an exception. So you really wind up in the same situation where you've got to evaluate those eight required findings, including the redesign and the deprivation of reasonable use. So we haven't seen a way that that works.
So just to clarify, so it's the very nature that it's even crossing the creek. It's not that maybe parts of the structure are within the creek setback. It's the entirety of the bridge that causes the need for the exception.
That is really the feature at play here that needs the exception, the bridge, its abutments, plus the access ways, those paved access ways that are leading to it. There's a small paved area in front of the ADU, but as noted in the staff report, the dwelling itself and the ADU, neither of those encroach into the creek setback.
Okay. And then not covered in previous conversations, but an additional question that I have for you, sort of going back to the discussion about the percentage of the property that can be, or the percentage of the lot that can be developed, and that the maximum amount is 40%. So if I'm understanding correctly, the way this lot is laid out with some buildable space on the east side, but most of it on the west side, is that most of it on the west side would be that 40%? Is that correct?
I'm afraid that explanation might have been, you know, not terribly clear, but what I meant to say is that the lot coverage limitation allows for some compensation of more intensive development on one portion of the property where it may not be practical on another portion of the property. Because, for example, the westerly portion of the property, you're not locked into a maximum of 40% of that portion. Your 40% is the entire net area. If you only covered 40% of this portion of the property, that would be a very small footprint. You have plenty, you know, you've got lots left over to, let's say, bring some building footprint over to this side of the site. So the point was really that that buildable footprint area, the lot coverage limitation, is not reduced by any of these considerations. Just where you fulfill that footprint is flexible here.
Okay, and then one last question. Some of the correspondence we received implied that if the council were to deny the appeal right tonight, that that would mean that the property owners could not develop this piece of property. And that's not the case, correct? They would just have to modify their design in order to meet the requirements.
Point that we were, you know, that we're trying to make here, that there is opportunity for development of this property, even if it's not practical to place structures on that eastern portion.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. You reminded me, Councilmember Shoresman, I did ask a question, the city attorney, actually. So I think it's Twin Ridge where their access is to work on the sewer, if that was necessary? Is that Twin Ridge?
I think there's at least two access points to reach that sewer easement in the back.
So could someone walk through that access road to the future potential ADU instead of having the bridge?
It sounds impractical based on the fact that you would have to enter from some other street in the first place, and they all travel over private property, and so absent arrangement of some easement with the property owners, that in itself would not be possible, not to mention any other impracticalities that accessing in that way would bring up.
Yes, thank you. That was the easement question that I was getting at, so I appreciate that. Thank you. Any other questions of staff at this time? Okay. So next, we'll move into the public hearing, to the public. We'll give the appellant 10 minutes. And as a reminder to the appellant, you are entitled to the 10 minutes of public testimony. You may reserve any of that portion for a response later, or you can use all 10 minutes now. And the city clerk will make note of that time if you'd like to reserve some. And Carol Florence will be responding for the appellant.
Yes, actually, we have two presenters, and Mr. Green would like to say a word. So I apologize for going really fast, but Julie and I will be making the bulk of the presentation, but based on comments from the council and staff, Mr. Green would like to address you as well. So.
Great, thank you.
Certainly. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Carol Florence. I'm a principal planner with Oasis Associates, representing the applicants, Eric and Julie Michaels. Tonight, I am accompanied by Julie Michaels, our project architect, Eddy Berto Herrera, and our legal counsel, Ty Green. Again, Julie and I will be making the presentation. I do want to thank you all for reviewing the council, the agenda correspondence, there was quite a bit of it on both sides of the fence, if you will. So on Eric and Julie's behalf, I respectfully request that the council uphold our appeal, grant the application for approval of a single-family residence in the ADU, adopt the mitigated negative declaration, and confidently make the necessary findings for the creek setback exception. Alternatively, and I would underscore this alternatively, should there be a need to decouple, if you will, the three components of the project, we would like the opportunity to have that discussion with you prior to the end of the public hearing. So I expect your decision tonight will be based upon our considered approach to and respect for the process, our evaluation of the site constraints and attributes, and our ability to sensitively balance those with our client's vision, as well as the regulatory framework and within the context of the neighborhood. And finally, your acknowledgement that the proposed home and the ADU do comply fully with the city's standards and regulations, which leaves us with the creek setback exception. While staff discounts the issuance of the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation agreement that was executed as solely a CEQA issue, I would beg to differ and offer that environmental analysis is really at the foundation of the policies that are embedded in our community's goals and policies and the creek setback findings for protection of the resource. As you know, staff previously made a case for four out of the five. We strongly believe that the remaining four findings can in fact be made. I know staff refuted Mr. Green's letter, but there's just but one interpretation of the findings and not the sole interpretation. So quickly, finding one speaks to minimizing the impacts. As Walter mentioned, there was a biological resource assessment completed, reviewed by an independent third-party consultant concluding, and I quote, "The potential impacts of the project, including the creek crossing on the riparian and wildlife corridor areas, were evaluated, and it was determined that potential impacts could be reduced to less than significance." Regarding finding four, addressing special circumstances, those of you having visited the site, its size compared with the other lots, the predominantly man-made topography, its location within the subdivision, and finally, the fact that the corridor bisects the property certainly represents special circumstances. Finding seven, that has to do with feasibility of development, and finding eight regarding reasonable use, I think, are inherently related. So under the circumstances, it's not the redesign of the structures, that's the question. They're not located within the creek setback, but rather, there is no redesign that would eliminate the need for the Michaels' access to their property on both sides of the corridor. If the redesign is focused on the bridge, I would simply underscore that there is no viable alternative to the bridge crossing that would more fully protect the habitat and allow safe access, regardless of the residential development. Staff comments that we have not offered an alternative to the bridge, and I think that's only because it is the superior solution. That concludes my presentation. I'd like to ask Julie Michaels to come to the podium and address you, and I want to thank you for the time and the opportunity to address you prior to the close of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Stewart, members of the city council. I'm going to go very quickly. I see the time ticking down. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you this evening. And this is what we're here to discuss, my hopeful future family home. There's a rendering of it there. Now, as you know from pre-meeting correspondence, I am a local resident trying to return home to San Luis Obispo. I'm the only one here tonight because my husband Eric is home with my children, and I put some photos up so you could see them. And I put a photo up of the tree on Higera that we sponsored back in 2012. That was our first attempt to put down roots in San Luis Obispo. So what we want to do on our lot is build our family home with a detached ADU for extended family. Both the house and the ADU do not require city exceptions. They are compliant with all regulations, as staff said in their own presentation this evening. There is a small creek running through the property, and a city exception is required to build a permanent crossing over that. I want to point out that a crossing over that creek is needed regardless of whether there's a permanent structure on the smaller side. There is simply no way, those of you who came out, remember the brush, and that was without water. You can't get across without some sort of crossing. Here are some photos of the creek. It's currently full of dead wood, invasive species, and even litter. It's my responsibility as a homeowner to maintain that area, and without some sort of access to the other side, I can't fully maintain it. The bottom photo was taken just last week after all of the atmospheric rivers that have come through. You can see that the water is well within the banks. However, it's no longer crossable on foot. This graphic was prepared by my architect, Eddy Herrera, and I want to point out that the majority of the property I own is set within the creek, the creek itself and the setback. You have to add those together. 54% of the lot is constrained by the creek and the creek setback. The proposed crossing covers 2% of that area, leaving 98% of the entire creek and setback for the wildlife. And so we have 54 and not 38% like staff because we have added in the setback, because it's all goes together. The bottom photo gives a rendering of what we want to do with our bridge, our crossing. It is intended for foot traffic. However, ideally, we would like to be able to get maybe a golf cart, a lawnmower, or something like that across to maintain the property on the other side. Now, when we bought this property and started to think of what we wanted to build, I recognized that it was going to be sensitive to the neighbors, because this is change, and change is always difficult. We bought the property just as COVID started, and we weren't able to return to Slow to meet any of the neighbors in person. So as we began to submit the plans in 2021, I sent a letter by snail mail to all of the properties bordering mine and even some of the other nearby neighbors, like the Clarks, inviting everyone to a Zoom call. I wanted to meet them, even virtually. I wanted to hear their concerns. I wanted to have a dialogue. I wanted to be a good neighbor. And out of everyone I invited, Dan Alvarez, Tom Elsroth, and the Clarks joined the call. No one else joined, and I haven't had any other direct contact from any of my neighbors. One thing I did realize very quickly from their comments is that the lot has been used by the neighbors for decades as their private backyard. All of those are photos of the gates that lead onto our property from their property, and there's even wildlife being fed on my property with that blue bucket there. I've tried to do everything right, everything. Every step of the way, I've consulted with experts. We didn't have a set plan for what we wanted to do on this property before we bought it. We let the site tell us what is best for the environment, where we should build. Our original design was indeed for a 12-foot bridge wide, because we thought that that would allow emergency vehicles to get in if they needed to. After the planning commission comments, we have redesigned that now to be eight feet, and that's what I showed in my slide. And I am willing, after the comments I've seen, I'll make that even smaller. I'll be flexible. Without a permanent crossing, there is no feasible way for me to get to the other side of the property, and I fear that I will do more damage to the riparian, any damage to the riparian, simply walking through it. All I want to do, all I want to do, is what everyone behind me has already done. I want to build my family home. Please. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Ty Green. I wanted to just address something real quick in 17 seconds, and there was a statement I wanted to just address something real quick in 17 seconds, and there was a statement made that there was no evidence in the record to support some of the findings, but there is, because the evidence in the record is you can't go to 35% of the property without a bridge, unless you're going to go back and forth through the creek, which is not something you should be doing. And I've got one second, and I'll stop because I can't keep going, but there is an environmental study that said that that bridge has no environmental impact. With the mitigation agreement, there are no impacts from that, so those two are evidence that there is supporting the findings. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have probably more questions and more comments, but at this time, we are to take public comment, and City Clerk, her is their public comment.
Yes, right now, we have seven people. The first one is Joanne Ruggles, then Jim A.P. Roberts, and then Kathy A.P. Roberts.
Well, I have real improved or increased appreciation for the work you do after sitting through a meeting like this. I'm glad I was an art professor and wasn't in city government, but I'm glad for your work, people. My name is Joanne Ruggles. Well, sorry. Good evening, Mayor Stewart and council members and staff members. My name's Joanne Bowley Ruggles. For a long time, my silk screens hung in this room on the back wall. I'm pretty well-known in the community as an art teacher. I taught at Cal Poly from the mid-1970s. I was the first woman to teach in the School of Architecture. There were 90 men and me, and that was for about five years. And then, I was allowed to get a position in the Art Department. Prior to that, wives weren't allowed to teach in the same college as their husband. My husband taught in the Graphic Communication Department. So, I had the wonderful good fortune to work with architecture students for five years. Two of them designed the house that we live in, we've lived in for 32 years, at 724 Patricia Drive. So, we were one of the first houses built on the slope of Bishop's Peak. Our lot was a sensitive site. We had to go through the Architectural Review Commission, but we had the good fortune to be working with these two, I call them young men, but one of them just retired to my whore. But anyway, two of my former students, one was our structural engineer, Bob Vesely, one was Frank Seiple, who was my student in drawing, who still claims that I was one of his best teachers. So, I know how to work with architects. I know how to design. I taught lots of design classes at Cal Poly. I taught life drawing. I taught figure painting. I taught architecture drawing. I taught freehand drawing and so forth. And I have real sympathy for this process and, you know, the site owners in terms of what they're going through. When we designed our house, we were turned down by the Architectural Review Commission for the color of our roof. We went back and changed it. They disapproved the fact that our house was going to be a three-story house, one dug into the hill, but, you know, two above, so we went back and removed a floor. We desperately wanted that house to work, and so, when we met with problems, things we hadn't understood or hadn't thought through, or perhaps didn't know some of the city rules on, when we learned that those were going to prevent our project from being approved, we changed them. We didn't repeatedly go back with the same plan. We changed them. We never came back with the same situation. We made alterations and came back again. So, I would just like to say that I don't quite know why this happened, whether it's poor client control or whether it's poor architecture design, but...
Go to the next person. Thank you so much.
Jim A.P. Roberts, and then Kathy A.P. Roberts.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name is actually App Roberts, but at any rate, my name is Jim App Roberts. My wife Kathy and I live in our home at 251 Twin Ridge. We have lived there for the last 14 years. Our home is adjacent to 841 Patricia. Before retiring, I was a California public school teacher for 34 years. As a teacher, I encouraged my students to be lifelong learners. I follow this approach in life. Over the course of the last two years, two and a half years, I have learned a lot about the property at 841 Patricia, about our neighbors, about our local government, and both Kathy and I are impressed by the city's dedication to the protection of wildlife. In February of 2021, Kathy and I learned that the new owners of 841 Patricia had been cited by code enforcement for cutting down and excessive trimming of trees in the creek and the wildlife corridor. At the same time, we learned about the proposed project for 841 Patricia. This led us to research city ordinances and codes in order to develop a clear understanding of the proposed project and its impact on Twin Ridge Creek and the wildlife corridor. We have expressed our concerns about this project to the Planning Department, to the Planning Commission, and now to you, the City Council. Our goals are to support the protection of the wildlife corridor and ensure that the protection follows city ordinances. We are here tonight to say that we are 100% in support of denying the appeal. I would like to ask anyone in the audience tonight who is here in favor of denying the appeal to please raise their hands.
We'll just leave the comments to us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members and staff. I'm Kathy App Roberts, and like my husband, who I've lived with, I live at 251 Twin Ridge Drive, and I've lived there for 14 years. We share a property line with the 841 Patricia Drive property, and I will go on the record now as saying the blue bucket that you saw on the slide is ours. It doesn't ever contain food. It's water for when we don't have rain, for the animals that come through to get water to drink. That's what it's for. It's what it's been like for 14 years. Before retiring, I enjoyed a long, full career as a public school teacher. Since my retirement, I have enjoyed a longer, full retirement as a volunteer in our community. I'm a certified master gardener, and I enjoy an active community volunteer life. I'm a lifelong hiker, and I'm passionate about protecting nature. I'm here tonight, joined by many of my neighbors, in support of the resolution to deny the appeal. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Victoria Friedenland, and then Ron Winter, Judd Clark, and then Donnie Valery.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and staff. My name is Victoria Friedenland, and my house is at 235 Twin Ridge Drive, so it backs up to the property. My husband, Dan Alvarez, and I, we sent some correspondence. We're the ones who sent the photos of some of the wildlife that we've seen from our backyard. And Dan and I met at Cal Poly. I'm a Cal Poly grad. He was a staff. His career was a librarian. My career has been in the biotechnology industry, and we always wanted to come back. So, we bought our forever home in 2014, and we remodeled it, and it's our retirement home now. I really don't have anything more to add. There's been considerable information here, but I do support the staff's recommendation to deny the appeal. Creeks and wildlife corridors and riparian vegetation need protection, and we ask that you also deny this appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor and members of the council, my name is Ron Winter, and my wife and I have a home at 290 Clover, and it is down at the end of that creek in the riparian right that's right there. And so, we have a lot of concerns with people going back and forth. We let their neighbors and everybody walk their dogs and do that. My main concern is no vehicular traffic goes through there. That easement is strictly for water and sewer. It's no access easement for anyone. When we first moved there, somebody was building along there, and we have a bocce ball court, which they pretty much destroyed with their trucks. At this point, we have 12 grandkids. We have swings down there. We have a treehouse. We have a beautiful bench to sit and for the kids to play on. So, there's a lot of kids down playing in that creek and around that area. So, it just needs to be made on record that there's no way anybody can use that creek access to get back into that lot back there. That's my concern. To me, this, I was in the development business for 40 years, seems like they're trying to put a size 10-foot in a size 6 shoe. You know, it's just a little too much. But anyway, we just love the area. We love that. Our kids love that. It's called the Creek House for a reason. So, thanks for your time.
Very nice. I have a size 11-foot, so that sounds painful.
Judd Clark, and then Donnie Valery, that's our last speaker.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Judd Clark. I'm so grateful to have this opportunity to be able to speak publicly about our concerns with what's going on with this amazing town that we live in. I did speak at the Planning Commission. My wife and I have lived at 221 Twin Ridge Drive since 2001, and our kids, as they were growing up, we did use some of that area in the creek. They played back there, but that was always with the permission of whatever landowners were back there. So, in that time, one time with my daughter when she was little, we actually did see turtles back there, which was pretty crazy. It was a long time ago. Tadpoles with my son, who's here tonight, bobcats, coyotes, a lot of deer. Our biologist neighbor said that there is evidence of a mountain lion not long ago out there as well. So, it is a corridor that's used frequently by wildlife. My wife and I actually looked at buying that property, and everything was disclosed to us, including some of, there's some issues with the soil as well, but there's a lot of restrictions. And the way that we looked at it was, you can't develop every piece of property that you buy. That's just the reality. So, I think if this were to be accepted, it would be a negative precedence for anybody that says, "Oh, I have this piece of land. I can do whatever I want with it. If you tell me no, I'm going to sue you." That just doesn't seem like what we should be doing, especially here in Slow. That's generally not the vibe that we're trying to put out there. We're worried about flooding. We've seen that whole entire lot behind our house through the 841 Patricia Creek area flood, and it's been real simple with just debris that's filling up and blocking maybe the culvert. Our worry is if there's a bridge that disrupts 4,000 square foot of riparian area, that anything could get caught under the bridge and create a flooding problem for not only the Michaels' residents, but for all of our residences that surround that area. I would just like to say that we would like to have the city uphold the city, excuse me. We would just really like the council to uphold the city staff recommendation to deny the applicant's appeal. And once again, I really appreciate the opportunity to talk. Thank you.
Thank you.
And after this speaker, we have one more, and it's Father Ed Alterhoff.
My name is Donnie Valier. I live at 248 Patricia Court. If you could, one of those pictures, that would be great, of the neighborhood. If you could put one of them up there, that would be great. I'd appreciate that. Boy, that's kind of, could you zoom in or something? It's kind of a, thank you very much. I'm the dotted line on the bottom where the pool is, and I have a few concerns as well. I support the recommendations of the staff and the Planning Commission. I think each and every person on the Planning Commission had multiple concerns, and I believe it was unanimous regarding their concerns regarding the recommendations. Thank you, by the way, for your sacrifice, God's blessing. I know the Father's coming after me and supporting the family, but just God's blessings on each of you and time and sacrifice here, looking for wisdom, transcendent wisdom, and emotionally charged issues dealing with people's property. So, I appreciate your time and efforts. Actually, don't hold this against me, but I'm Ronnie's brother-in-law, and partly, what he said was absolutely true. He didn't know I was going to say this, and forgive my pun. The problem is these fine people, and they are fine people, are trying to do too much on a lot that's just not available to do a lot on. And so, they're pushing boundaries that not only are not legally justified, as noted by the Family Commission and staff, but it just violates the ambiance and the nature of our community. You saw the hands that came up, and you could see how many people live in this community. We have a tight community. If you can imagine, a huge structure, which they're recommending right now on the West Side. Unfortunately, as she mentioned, and she has roots, I liked her, pun intended, many has roots in this community, unfortunately, there's just not a lot of space that they can do with this space. And so, they're trying to maximize space usage, which is understandable. However, in the process, have made compromises that are not legally ethical, in my opinion, and they do compromise the feeling of the community as it currently exists. That's why a number of my neighbors are concerned. Nothing against them. I'm sure they're fine people. They would be great neighbors in a multitude of ways. I'm concerned of a big building structure and compromising the integrity of the land by my pool, because I have a pool that the grandkids play in. I'm thankful for your time. Wish blessings on each of you. I'm thankful for your time and energy, and particularly those of you who've taken some time maybe to go by and just walk around the property and kind of get a feel for it. So, again, thank you for your time, and I appreciate...
Thank you.
I hear all their comments, but the issue here tonight reminds me of Walden Pond, an idyllic world of nature with birds, trees, and animals, and of course, the brilliant misfit Henry David Thoreau. The Michaels' property is not a Walden Pond. Otherwise, the neighbors, in all their precious thoughtfulness, would have petitioned the San Luis Obispo City Council years ago to preserve 841 Patricia Way. Now, however, that the property has been purchased and a family dares to live there, it has assumed a prominence it never had. Fences and bridges may impede wildlife, but it seems in this case, only on the Michaels' property. At the last zoning meeting, one young woman confessed that she used to trespass on the property doing yoga as she meditated in nature. I suspect there is a lot of nature in the neighboring backyards. Perhaps that young woman should have visited the other yards as well. The environmental solution, therefore, I recommend tonight, is that all the neighbors should be more welcoming to nature, even though the moles are destroying their gardens and raccoons are spilling their trash. Never use chemicals or fertilizers. Take down their fences, as Robert Frost suggested. Not just the Michaels' should have this responsibility. Some have said that kindness to animals is the test of humaneness. I believe the opposite. If you cannot be welcoming to humans, who cares how we are to animals? I would recommend to the City Council and the Patricia Drive neighborhood that they put themselves in the place of the Michaels' family. How would you want to be treated? The highest ethic in any religion is the same, the golden rule, do unto others as you would want them to do unto you. There are also rights. The Michaels' bought the property presuming they could build on it. Along the process, no one hinted or warned them of difficulties or problems. None of the neighbors contacted them, by and large, not even suggesting partial step-by-step emendations. While the golden rule always applies, the matter tonight is primarily... While the golden rule always applies, the matter tonight is primarily about fairness. And finally, I would like to say, I'm only a Catholic priest. However, I was in your position. I was an elected member of a public school board. I sat and heard people, all these questions and answers and deliberated and budgets. And I would always listen to everyone, much to the distress of my other members, so that everybody could say their say. And I appreciate what you're doing. I understand your, I see your competence and your thoughtfulness. I understand your soul, is what I see tonight. And I want to say that to you.
Thank you so much. Is that the last person? Okay, we're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break. We'll see you at 5 till 8. All right. Thank you so much for enjoying the break. And we're going to go ahead and come back together for the item 6A. And I'd like to invite the appellant to share some information and potentially answer some questions from the council.
I'm happy to answer any of your questions. Out of due respect, I would ask that first.
Do you want the questions first?
Sure.
You sure? Okay.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that everything's on the table. No one has questions?
Not at this time. I think you should go ahead and share what you're thinking.
Okay. I would respectfully request, given the communications from staff as well as the questions from council, that you not deny the project as a whole and direct staff to work with us to respond to the comments that we heard this evening, so that we can move the project forward or components of the project forward based on, again, what we heard this evening. I would appreciate that, since we have been at it for over two years now and having to go back and scrap all of the good work that a lot of people have done on this project, including our neighbors, that you give us an opportunity to work with staff again. And we may not see you since the project may be at a level that we won't. I'd be happy to report back to you, as I'm sure staff will be as well. But I would appreciate that accommodation this evening. And if you do have any questions, I'm happy to address those for you if you aren't clear about what I'm asking.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
City Attorney, would that be a continuance? Would that be a, thank you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My recommendation would be that you deny the appeal, thus denying the project as proposed, but with direction for the applicant to return and work with staff to modify the project in response to your direction here tonight, which, to Ms. Florence's point, may in fact result in a project that isn't subject to Planning Commission or council subsequent review, may result in a project revision reduction that falls within the scope of director purview.
Okay, so that would, even though we deny, if that was to be the case, that it would allow, that doesn't cancel the opportunity for making change?
That's entirely within the council's discretion to direct.
Great, thank you so much.
And we would appreciate that accommodation, not having to start from square one. We've
I'm sure.
Worked long and hard and diligently to get to this point, so thank you for that.
I do have one question before we get to that point. And when it comes to the eastern side and maintaining, how has the maintaining been happening so far for the past time period that you've owned the property?
So we've done a couple things to maintain. We do go out there and mow, but, and that's Brett, who's here tonight, does that for us. But it's a huge production to try and get a mower to the other side.
That's my next question. How do you get it there?
If it's dry enough, lay down some plywood temporarily. If not, I guess try and carry it. We also have tried to maintain the creek by looking at the wood, the trees in there. And that was brought up earlier. We worked with, we worked with the city and a contractor. And the contractor was given instructions as to what should be trimmed back. And unfortunately, the contractor trimmed a few things that shouldn't have been. And we were then sited. So we have not actually taken away any more dead wood. And that's something that for fire prevention needs to be done. But I think I was waiting, I was waiting for all of this to kind of resolve, because I can't have another citation for the wrong branch being cut.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, I wish that modifications and conversations had been had before coming to this point, but I understand that we are where we are. Councilmember Francis.
Yeah. A question you just asked, and maybe to direct this at city staff. In a year such as this, where water levels would probably preclude them being able to get across the creek to bring maintenance vehicles or mowers or whatever material over, what is the kind of, what is their legal access to that side of the property? And how would they access that in a particularly wet year so that they could maintain fire safety and all of that?
Yeah, so the access is just across the creek. There isn't the ability to access the property from the other easements. Any type of access, any type of structure that's going to have to be built across that creek would require some kind of an exception. And in that case, that would be evaluated based on the findings that have been discussed tonight, that that's the minimum feature necessary to achieve that access in order to be consistent with the creek setback regulations. Of course, it's hard to speculate what that might look like, but of course, it's something quite a bit different than what was under the council's purview tonight.
So any maintenance access would have to be across the creek?
That's correct. The access has to be across the creek.
City Manager.
So, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Francis, you know, we have these situations all over the city where, you know, we typically wait until, you know, the soil conditions are right, you know, so we're not bringing vehicles out there and doing track out and other things. So usually, there's an amount of judgment that's used. And if it's fire abatement, if we're speaking to, we can certainly work with the fire marshal to figure out the timing of that. Most of the, you know, brush and vegetation management that happens on these smaller parcels is really kind of with smaller tools. So weed whips, you know, pruners and trimmers, you know, doesn't typically require big, heavy equipment to get in there. And so we would imagine when the conditions are right, you know, we haven't set a deadline this year when fire vegetation management has to happen. That's usually the middle of June, depending on kind of the, you know, what happens over the next few months. And we would expect people might just walk across the area to gain access to do the work by hand.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you. I guess to my colleagues, first and foremost, how you feel about this decision moving forward to a denial with guiding the council, I'm sorry, guiding the staff to be able to make modifications? Or would you like to share more about this before we get to that point? Councilmember Pease.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone involved. I am supportive of that approach. I think that Carol Florence maybe accurately read the approach, what we're thinking here. And so in general, I'm in agreement with not being able to find those findings, as both the staff and the Planning Commission have indicated. And gosh, if we could figure out some way to be able to, you know, have a project that meets requirements go forward, I would certainly be supportive of that.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Schorsman.
Yeah, I think part of the reason that I asked some of the questions that I did leading up to this was I don't want the end result of this to be that they can't build anything there. I mean, this is a large, beautiful lot. It's obviously remained vacant and unsold until the Michaels purchased it for a reason. There are complications with it. But there is, obviously, they've done the work. There is plenty of buildable space there. And so it seems, my understanding was that even if there was a denial tonight, that they would be able to come back and not be hindered or setback in their planning process so that they could continue to move forward in collaboration with staff to move things along as quickly as they can, but to make something that, as our city attorney said, was consistent with all of our guidelines and requirements. And I would be supportive of that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Marks.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm supportive of that approach as well. I do want to say that I've been involved with local politics here in the city of San Luis Obispo since we moved here in 1988. And I was on the Planning Commission in 1996 and voted in favor of the creek and wildlife protection statutes that we have and the policies that we have. And they worked really, really well. I think it's a beautiful example of the respect that and caring that our community has for the creeks, the creek land and the wildlife. I agree that the findings, I think I do support the Planning Commission and the staff in that the findings that were necessary, would have been necessary for creek setback exception just weren't there. I do think, though, there was a great opportunity to redesign the project in such a way that the basic goals of the property owners can be met. And so denying this without prejudice so they could submit a new application makes sense, so that they don't lose that time. And I do want to say I really appreciate, and thank everyone for coming forward. And this is, I say my heart goes out to everybody in this situation. I think it's a good, a good starting point to deny the project and direct staff to work with the applicants for a redesign that does not violate our creek and wildlife policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Francis.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with my colleagues here this evening. It's an absolutely lovely home, and they are lovely people. And we're really lucky to have them joining our community, coming back to our community. And so I'm glad to see we have a compromise here that both protects our creek setback, but also allows them to move forward with their project.
Thank you. And I am absolutely thrilled that we're at this point, that there could be some compromise made. I think that's really important for housing to be built and for, at the same time, the wildlife and the creek to be protected. I think both of those things. When I walked out to the property, I have to say, it reminded me, you know, a bridge to terrapithia. I see why the children and grandchildren play in that area. It sounds absolutely wonderful. And I can understand why you would want to be able to build your home. And I hope that you can find a good compromise to be able to build that forever home and be able to live as wonderful neighbors together. And I just really appreciate the time that everyone's taken to get to this point. And maybe in the future, we can have some of these mediation conversations before it comes all the way to here, so it's better for you all, truly. And I guess, can I have an official motion? Vice Mayor?
Yes, I would like to move that we deny the project, but without prejudice, and direct staff to work with the applicants for a redesign that does not violate the creek's setback, that requires no creek setback exception.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Councilmember Francis.
I'll second.
Thank you. City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pease?
Yes.
Councilmember Schorsman?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes, and the motion passes 5-0. Thank you so much for all of your time and all of the staff's time on this as well. We greatly appreciate it. So next up, another very emotional, exciting topic, trees. So next, we have the adoption of the Community Forest Plan. And I believe City Manager, sorry, Deputy City Manager Greg Herman. And Bob Hill is not here, no?
Bob's on his way up, and so I know you've seen this before.
Oh, there he is. Sorry.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, you know, you've heard this before. So we've got just a brief presentation in the interest of time, because I know we've got a few other items in front of you tonight.
Sorry, I didn't see you, Bob.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. Just to kick things off really quick, as we're getting everyone situated and able to bring the presentation up tonight. So just very quickly, we're excited to bring forward the first-ever Community Forest Plan for our community. Appreciate all the feedback that has gone into the plan up until this point. The purpose of the plan is to provide a long-term, sustainable vision for our urban forest. It's important to note, and I'll be highlighted as part of the report, that it's rooted in climate action resilience goals, integrates DEI, and relies upon ongoing engagement and participation to ensure successful implementation. The effort began nearly two years ago, as Chris Hama, who is making his way to the stage now, began this work as a professional project for his masters in city and regional planning. He's worked in conjunction with the Office of Sustainability Natural Resources and in close coordination with our partners in Public Works on bringing this plan forward. And I want to thank Chris for his dedication to this effort. And with that, I'll hand it over to Bob and Chris for the report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Bob Hill, Sustainability and Natural Resources official. It's a really honor and privilege to be with you tonight, along with my coworker, Chris Hama, who's done the lion's share of the work here on this Community Forest Plan we have before you tonight. A good botanist friend of mine sent me a quote recently. Trees are plants that people call trees, a term of dignity, not botany. That's a quote from a book called Elder Flora about ancient trees written by Jared Farmer. And indeed, we have over 13,000 of these dignified plants called trees in our community and many, many, many more in our creeks and open space areas. And so it's really our honor to bring forward the recommendation for the Community Forest Plan this evening. And City Clerk, if I haven't quite done this right on the screen, your assistance would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our recommendation this evening, as recommended by the Tree Committee, adopt a resolution entitled, A Resolution of the City Council of San Luis Obispo, California, Proving the Community Forest Plan: A Determination of Categoryal Exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act. Mr. Hama.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart and City Councilmembers. Thanks so much for your attention to the Community Forest Plan this evening, for the second time since you have seen it previously in January at our study session. I'd like to go ahead and read the urban forest vision that is in the plan. The city of San Luis Obispo is a community identified and shaded by a diverse, resilient, and thriving urban forest. Relying on the Community Forest Plan, the city actively encourages participation in tree planting and stewardship, preserves and protects trees, and promotes public safety and tree health. The plan helps the city implement cost-effective enhancement and maintenance of the urban forest, increases public awareness of the value of our community. increases public awareness of the value of our community forest, and maximizes its social, economic, and environmental benefits for current residents and future generations. The Community Forest Plan as written has four goals. The first being to maintain and expand the city's urban forest, to maximize the aforementioned benefits while minimizing undesirable conditions. The second is around sustainability. Adopt a right tree, right place perspective that includes end-of-life use for trees. It includes climate resilience, water conservation, and all of those other things. The third goal is about collaboration. Foster a spirit of collaboration between and within city departments and with the city's external stakeholders, who have long been very helpful in working with the city to get trees planted and watered and so on and so forth. And the last goal is to educate and seek the involvement of city residents and visitors, including underserved or underrepresented groups, to obtain their interest and participation in the creation of a thriving urban forest. So the forest plan's implementation objectives and actions should be informed by the vision, by the mission, and the goals of the plan. I will not read through all of these here, but I feel as though, over time, in consultation with our partners in Public Works and the various outreach that was done, I feel as though we've achieved a good representation, a cross-section of issues here. Some of these are of higher profile than others to the public. I would just call out at this point, 1.4, reexamine tree removal and mitigation policies. I would also call out 1.6, addressing issues unique to downtown, our huge, beautiful ficus trees that everyone loves, but they've really outgrown their space. Those are issues that most likely will come back before the council sometime in the future. But overall here, I feel as though we have a good representation of the issues before urban forestry professionals. So a variety of public engagement was completed for the plan. This included stakeholder interviews that I did while still a graduate student at Cal Poly. Davy Resource Group and their organizational assessment report for Public Works also did stakeholder interviews. The Office of Sustainability and Natural Resources held three natural solutions forums in summer of 2022. We see a photograph of that here. That, of course, had to do with the climate action planning process, which includes our urban forest. Interdepartmental collaboration just refers to the fact that sustainability and natural resources staff and Public Works staff have been working together pretty closely on this plan for over a year. I'm very grateful for that collaboration and cooperation from Public Works and Urban Forces, Urban Forest Services staff. Davy Resource Group also did a benchmark community survey. This was an online survey. They received 644 responses to this survey, and my understanding is that is the second best response they have ever received with any survey that, that they have done. So I think, you know, given that they work in other cities that are much bigger, I think that speaks a lot to the interest in this city on this topic. I feel as though residents are pretty engaged. The last bullet here simply says that before Tree Committee reviewed the plan as it was written in February, that we contacted about two dozen stakeholders and just let them know that the plan was available for their review and comment prior to or at the Tree Committee meeting. And I will now hand it back over to Bob to discuss more on outreach.
Thank you, Chris. So that concluded summarizing the public engagement that we undertook in preparation of the plan and then coming before you this evening. One of the real hallmarks of successful implementation of this Community Forest Plan will be ongoing community outreach and public participation and working, really relying on our community partners and our community to make this vision into a reality. So a few things we really want to highlight that we think will underscore success are maintaining our Tree City USA certification and Arbor Day, continuing to tie in with our, our marketing programs and Earth Day events. One of our signature programs that recently received some press was Keys for Trees. It's a collaboration with our Economic and Tourism Office. Foster interdepartmental collaboration and will be particularly working closely with Nestor and DEI. We have a lot of great external partners, and this is just a short list, working with EcoSlow, Rotary, the Downtown Foresters, and really bolstering volunteerism. People love to plant trees and get involved. We think there's a role for Cal Poly and Cuesta, and we have great relationships with faculty there who really provided a lot of support to us as well. And piloting a complimentary tree program. We think this is a great way for people to start stewarding trees and protecting trees on their own properties. Restarting the Commemorative Grove Project, which would be when possible and as additional sites are available. And then really, and Chris was able to go out and refotograph current conditions of every heritage tree and, and publicizing that, having a walking tour or a pamphlet, making a big deal about our heritage trees. So this is a relatively brief presentation. We're scheduled for 20 minutes, so we just want to really go through the prior council review. As council may recall, the Community Forest Plan was originally identified as the Work Program for the Climate Action Plan for Community Recovery. It was further identified in the 21 through 23 Major City Goal Work Program. And so this is directly responsive in fulfillment of that work program item. And, and again, we just came back with the work program moving forward, 23 through 27 for the cap, and again, reiterated some of these goals and bringing forward the implementation of this plan. I wanted to really highlight, we had the study session in partnership with our coworkers in Public Works Urban Forest, and I want to thank Anthony Whipple and Greg Cruz and Matt Horn for being with us again tonight. A few key elements of feedback from council that were reflected in the minutes were not to continue the Commemorative Grove, Grove Program at Laguna Lake Park, but to consider alternative locations as time and resources permit. And so that's clear in our, our, our final plan document and the implementation matrix. Review and consider updating compensatory planting requirements, and I'll add the whole sort of development review processes. So that's a conversation for later, but we have that in the work program coming up in the, in the next year. And then lastly, council was supportive of the complimentary tree giveaway program or grant program. And we'll talk a little bit about next steps and a few more slides and funding and so forth. And then lastly, there was some discussion just at our most recent goal-setting workshop, seems like only a few Saturdays ago, regarding urban forestry and continuing to keep this going. We did have a really nice, long discussion with the Tree Committee that occurred just this past February. They are recommending the plan for adoption to the city council. They were particularly interested and provided feedback increasing communication and outreach. One of the Tree Committee members says, hey, what we did for our active transportation network 10 years ago is what we need to start doing with trees. And so there was a feeling among the Tree Committee, what can we do to bring that level of support and community engagement? A real emphasis again in underscoring, prioritizing underrepresented communities and meeting them where they are and then what their needs are. Again, revisiting tree replacement standards and processes. That's an item that Tree Committee's, I think, deeply involved with in looking for more tools for how to, to work through complicated projects. And then lastly, just really enhancing partnerships, which is a central theme and tenet of the Community Forest Plan. Just briefly, I want to mention the, our approach to environmental review in California Environmental Quality Act for this project ostensibly is that it's categorically exempt under general rule, Section 15061. The idea being here is that this is a guidance document and has no binding effect on future activities. And so the idea here is that as projects come forward that may be subject to CEQA, they'll still need to go through that process. But this plan in and of itself doesn't authorize a specific new capital P project under CEQA above and beyond what our normal day-to-day routine maintenance activities or tree planting activities would be that wouldn't rise to that level. This is the same approach that was taken with the downtown concept plans, some may recall, and so similar sort of a process and philosophy there. Also, the Community Forest Plan is clearly consistent with the environmental document that was adopted for the Climate Action Plan, and this is an outgrowth of that planning effort as well. Lastly, just want to talk a little bit about next steps and fiscal impact. So we're continuing to catch up on our maintenance backlog, and that is funded through ongoing contract work that is in, existing in ongoing budgets. Increase outreach and work with city partners to implement the TEN-TALL initiative. And just a preview for where, well, the discussion will be having on April 18th, there is $50,000 proposed in what's called a one-time SOBC for 2023 through 25 to move forward with the TEN-TALL initiative. And some portion of those funds could be used for the complimentary tree giveaway, probably a relatively small amount because it won't take much. Hire a new city urban forest staff when resources permit. And there is a new urban forester FTE proposed, ongoing, starting in 23 through 25. Seek grant funding for implementation. Cal Fire, we have a few different grants in, in play with them right now. And then I want to highlight, there's $1.5 billion on the federal level in the Inflation Reduction Act for urban forestry. The rulemaking and grant-making processes for those dollars isn't out there quite yet. It's, some people are starting to talk about it and forecast that, so we'll be keeping a close eye on that. The tree planting lifecycle plans are already integrated into our staff work programming. Again, we mentioned coming back about municipal code and tree removals and mitigation requirements as an existing work program item, and then continuing to reexamine the responsibilities and authorities of the Tree Committee staff, which goes with the prior item. And some of those things may change depending on how we set policies and what their role will be. So lastly here, our recommendation is to adopt the resolution approving the plan and the categorical exemption for intervention CEQA. And then this last photo I'll leave you with is one of our heritage trees. It's the Japanese maple that you can see at the Jack House and Gardens, one of our signature city-owned properties. If you have any questions, we're available, and thanks for the opportunity for the presentation.
Thank you. Brief and, but also very, very helpful to understand what we were encouraging in the past and continuing to execute through this plan. So thank you so much. Vice Mayor Marks?
Yeah, we did get an email from a resident asking us who suffers from allergies, asking us if the urban forest plan or community forest plan could in some way address the issue of, I think it was like they wanted more female trees, as I, as I recall. Has that, has staff considered the, that angle?
Councilmember Marks, so that's an interesting one to deal with. And as part of our discussion we had at the study session, you may recall, we had Dr. Matt Ritter from Cal Poly Biological Sciences help us understand the sort of current understanding of that science. And ultimately, it's very difficult. We can't always ascertain sex of a particular tree at the time that you locate it. A lot of the tree allergens have actually been found to be mostly born from grass species in our area. So ultimately, the recommendation that we're relying on, and again, we want to be rooted in best available science with our approach, is that that's a challenging way to approach the right plea, the right tree in the right place and developing the right tree planting program that is climate-forwarded, going to be drought resilient and did belong into
Thank you for that. Councilmember Francis?
Yeah, just a couple of really quick questions. You mentioned the compensatory planning policies coming back before us sometime in the, the next year. And I know that there was a lot of interest in that from the correspondence that we, we got. And I was wondering if you could give a little clarification on, on when we expect to see that and in what form, and when we'll have opportunities for input.
Thanks. If I may, I'd like to invite either Greg Cruz or Matt Horn to help.
Yep. Hi, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So we don't have a definite date, but we do anticipate it coming next fiscal year. Back to the council. One exciting kind of new development is because of the good work Chris and Bob and the team's done. We did have some surplus funding in this current fiscal year. So we've asked Davy Resource Group to help us out with an analysis. What they're going to do is do a case study of eight different communities with a larger overview of about 25 different communities and what their compensatory plantings requirements are.
Thank you. And then one kind of small question, one of the recommendations from the, the Tree Committee caught my eye about ID tags recommendation. I was wondering if that made it into the final form or if that was determined to be too expensive?
I don't think that that actually made it into our implementation matrix, but I think that if council wanted to direct us to add that, again, it would be guidance in the overall theme of the document. I don't, I think that would be a non-up to the edit we could add.
I don't know if I have strong feelings around it. I just wanted to, to know if it had made it in. I, I know that it probably has budget implications that I'd probably want to explore a little bit more in detail before making a recommendation around that. But my, my second question, or third, I guess now, is a little bit more substantial. There's also a recommendation from the Tree Committee around focusing on neighborhoods with underrepresented communities. And on page 38, there was a section that said to consider new tree wells based on equity goals. And I was wondering how we move towards more active language around that, not just considering new tree wells in, in those underrepresented communities, but actually making sure we're prioritizing those tree wells. I know we have prioritize outreach in areas that are low-income and vulnerable to heat on page 47, but I'd love to see that kind of active language when we're looking at new tree wells as well.
Yeah, thank you. That's our intent. And I think there's a couple of key pieces of where we wanted to, it's definitely our intent to prioritize there. I think that's reflective in the document, hopefully. In, in site-specific locations, we want to consider where they're appropriate. And in, in some cases, we may not have a property owner or a budding that is enthusiastic about having a new tree there, or there may be a utility conflict or another reason why that's not the appropriate site. So I think that's why we used that language, consider, because it won't always work in every case.
Thank you. Councilmember Schorsman?
Yes, thank you as always for the great report. And the study session we had on this topic was exuberant, to say the least. Lots of energy around it. And as the Davy report shows, our community loves its trees. So I know that everybody will look forward to the activities that happen going forward on this. The questions that I had, you know, we talked about the Commemorative Grove, and you referenced the, the feedback that you got from council. The way it's written in the couple of places where it's talked about in the plan, it, it doesn't, I know that we, there was general consensus among the council that, as you said, the Grove could be, you know, sort of halted or taken a break from in its current location. But my sense was that, you know, we wanted to see it continue, and that, that's referenced in the plan as well, restart. But it says restarted at a future date. And I wondered if we might consider, you know, saying something to the effect of, to put some sort of time, not limit on it, but some sort of time that, you know, it's, we're not going to move forward with it in the 23 financial, 23, 25 financial plan, but we'll reexamine in the 25, 27. I think it's a program that people love and appreciate enough that we should at least make reference to when we'll look at it again. I'm wondering if that would be appropriate?
I think certainly that's appropriate. And I think, you know, and thank you for allowing me to answer the question is, there's a couple pieces. There's also the Laguna Lake Plan and work we have to do at the outgrowth of the San Luis Ranch development. So we need to engage that community. And so part of it is, you know, I think there's some, you know, there's the fact that there's a lot of deferred maintenance. But secondhand, we want to then make sure that whatever we program and look at in terms of uses in Laguna Lake are consistent with the Commemorative Grove, and so we're not getting ahead of that. So I would just ask the council to consider that as kind of a proceeding step before reactivating any sort of program out there.
Yeah, I guess my intent was that it's a beloved enough program that I'm afraid of if we don't put some sort of trigger in our plans that will, of when we will relook at it, that, that it could fall off our radar.
If I could just offer, you know, we've got 10,000 trees to plant. And so I think there's going to be lots of trees and lots of ample opportunities. And I guess the concern is just really about that location, right? And so if we have maybe a tree program, I guess I would respectfully suggest if there's a way that people can plant commemorative trees, not necessarily in the Grove, but as part of our tree planting, would that, you know, satisfy what you're looking for?
That, I think, yes. That's what we were talking about specifically the night of the study session was about the Grove in particular in its current location. And I think there is language in some parts that say, you know, we'll reexamine in a different location or just we'll reexamine in general. And so my suggestion is really around just putting some sort of trigger point in it for if we're not going to include it in our 23 for if we're not going to include it in our twenty-three, twenty-five financial plan, to look at it and to reexamine where and how that program should be implemented, that we maybe suggest a line item that says when we will look at it, just so that we have a trigger point that lets the community know that we haven't just forgotten about this and that we're going to consider it at some point in the future.
I think, Stafford, you want to respond?
Yes. Sorry.
Sure. Sorry, I didn't want to jump the gun there respectfully. Indeed, I think our intent was to evaluate if there's another location that would be feasible, but also to really look at the cost structure of what it takes to do a good job and maintain these trees and care for them over time, which is where that maintenance burden at the existing grove has been been challenging. But as far as timing, I certainly don't want to commit our urban forest coworker, so I'd ask for your input.
So I don't have a good answer for you tonight, but I understand where you're coming from and the desire to kind of have that restart date. Best-case scenario, you know, I do think it could be towards the later part of the twenty-three, twenty-five financial plan. I don't know if we'd want to include that in the document or but I do think that's doable pending kind of Laguna Lake studies and those plans. So I don't unfortunately know the timeline on that. I'm sure Derek does.
I don't have any magic answers, but what I would suggest is that maybe an item is that in there is that, you know, return to council with a strategy for, you know, reinstituting a commemorative tree planting program. And that can be an action item that we put in and by the, you know, by twenty-twenty-five, if that helps the council.
Can I ask a question? Is it something that needs to be specifically in the community forest plan? Or is this really something we could be talking about for the budget in the next meeting that kind of is like when we tie in the twenty-five to twenty-seven plan, that this is something that's brought up at that time? Just a just a suggestion.
Yeah, no, I guess I'm not being very clear. Sorry. My intent was just to put something somewhere, whether it's in this plan or in another document or maybe through our budget process. But if we're not going to do it in the twenty-three, twenty-five financial plan, if this isn't going to be an element of the work plan in twenty-three, twenty-five, then it seems appropriate to me that we just put a trigger somewhere. And I was thinking in this document that we will examine this program at a as at a date uncertain, but that it's just noted somewhere so that it doesn't get lost in the shuffle, so to speak, because it is a program that people want to see, I think, in some way, shape, or form in the future.
Absolutely understood. And so I do concur with Derek's recommendation. I think, you know, when we return to the council with the compensatory planting update, that would be a good time to have a timeline at that point. I do see that, you know, like I said, within the next twelve to eighteen months, coming back to council with that. So if that timeline is reasonable, we'll potentially have studies of the Laguna Lake a little bit further and have a better input there of if not at Laguna Lake, then where is it across the city, you know, in different spots, have more information and can return to council then.
Thank you. Sorry to make that so complicated. I didn't think it was when I first thought about it.
Sure. So if I could close the loop then, in the implementation matrix in the community forest plan, one point seven point one two, where we have restart the city commemorative tree program, when new additional sites and staffing and resources are adequate, we can also add a line there. If it's the council's pleasure to bring back a strategy, to do so by the end of twenty-twenty-five. I will note that since we've published this draft plan, we did see a few other minor clerical edits, so we'll make a be making a couple other small adjustments as well that are non-substitutive.
And I think the key is review, right? It's not that you have to have the entire thing done.
Exactly. Thank you. That's that satisfies what I was looking for. I think it's on page nine fifty-one. It's item, just go there. It's item one point eight point two. It says, when planting, when planning tree planting activities, prioritize and perform outreach in areas of the city identified as low-income, vulnerable to heat, to heat stress, and in tree poor areas where residents express interest in new trees. I guess my question was about the the last part of that sentence. Why would we just focus on areas where residents express interest in new trees?
Thank you for the question, council member. So what this is about, and it was a little bit of the discussion we had at study session as well, is that generally speaking, when we have a tree well that's vacant and it's in the city right of way, we want to put a tree there. So that's a priority for us. And one of the ways that we like to do that in neighborhoods is see if we have a nearby neighbor who wants to adopt that tree and care for it and water it. And some cases, residents express that they don't want to do that. And so we didn't want to make the presumption that just because somebody lives in a lower-income or underserved neighborhood that they necessarily want this and can be expected to take care of it. So be that as it may, it's still a priority area for as we establish new planting areas.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Marx.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I'm a little concerned about people who perhaps want to plant a commemorative tree. And I hope that a list is being kept somewhere. I'm not sure what the regular process is now. But I think we need to make sure that we have something to say to people who want to do that. Like maybe, well, we've suspended the program right now, but we're planning other alternatives. I don't know exactly if there is a list being kept or, you know, what exactly you're saying to people. Because usually when they do that, like somebody died and they're feeling want to do something, let's plant a tree, I mean, it's kind of a traditional thing to do.
Yeah, thank you, council member. So there is an existing place on the Urban Forest Services website page regarding the commemorative grove and trees in memory of somebody special. So that would be a spot to add who to contact and how to do that. But I'll also ask Anthony or Greg if.
Maybe keep a waiting list or something like that. Yeah.
Council members, mayor, I do have a list of people that are interested and have reached out to me for a commemorative planting. It's ongoing. And my language that I've told them as of recent was that the program has been tabled, and once we get further direction, we'll continue with that direction. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. And the other thing I just want to say is that we haven't had public comment on this yet, have we? I guess we're not. No, I just want to say that I hope that you also look at the grounds around City Hall. I think I spotted at least two very dead trees very close to our building. So I hope that, you know, besides the neighborhoods and everything else, you also look at city facilities and get rid of those dead trees. Okay.
Thank you. I think most of my questions have been asked, but I do want to come back to page ten thirty-eight and ten thirty-nine around strategy one and the equitable conversation around getting people involved. So I was wondering, when we do our public engagement manual conversation in a couple of weeks, would this be a time to kind of tie these two together again? Because one of the things I I feel like in many of our plans, we have outreach discussions around equitable communications, but then we have a public engagement manual that says sometimes different things. So is it something we should be tying together? Or is that a conversation really for today?
Deputy City Manager Herman.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. So that's going to be May second that we've got that item teed up. Let's get to take our existing public engagement and noticing manual, which we last created in twenty fifteen. We have not updated it since then. There's been a lot of changes in terms of the different tools that we use. We've learned a lot through the DEI task force. We've got an expanded outreach list that we really need to plug into that process. And so what we hope to come away with after that meeting is a new adopted public engagement manual that builds off of everything that we've learned in the last eight years and can be a guide to staff to have an expanded outreach program when they embark in new initiatives and programs. And so that will then be applied to everything that we do beyond that point where there's a public engagement process.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, we have public comment. Any public commenters?
Yes, we have two. Haley Powell and then Donna Hare Price.
Good evening, council. My name is Haley Powell. I graduated from Cal Poly, spring twenty twenty-two with a major in agriculture, and I'm currently a public policy student at Cal Poly in the master's program. First off, I'd like to say I'm really proud of San Luis Obispo for putting together this plan to plant ten thousand trees. That's amazing. However, when I was reading the draft for this plan, I noticed that there was a lack of conversation around the effects of the urban forest on public health. And measuring public health is a crucial part, a crucial part of ensuring equity, especially when considering it's one of the main objectives of the urban forest plan, is to improve the equitable access to the public goods. The plan talks extensively about tree health, but not as much about how the urban forest might affect public health. Over the next ten years, SLO has a very unique opportunity, assess how public health may change, especially in inequitable neighborhoods where tree forest can abuse only about seven percent. I would like to see some involvement with the SLO Department of Public Health involved with the community forest plan, such as monitoring the air quality in various neighborhoods, conducting health surveys, and potentially analyzing healthcare data as it relates to public health services and mental health services over the next ten years. By making public health a measure of equity in the community forest plan under objective one point eight, we can ensure that the tree equity score is more uniform across SLO and that we are truly trying to combat systemic environmental racism within our city. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. I just want to echo what everyone has been talking about, and I greatly appreciate that you're looking at the racial equity component of the urban forest. As we all know, this is not only a racial equity issue, it's a climate change and a public health issue. I appreciate looking at creative solutions to ensure that areas that are more racially diverse and densely populated, such as the Margarita neighborhood, with a seven percent tree coverage and equity score of four forty-six, really, we can get it to the place where it matches the congressional district that has a twenty-seven percent tree covers and an equity score of ninety-four. I think that really highlights the inequities even within forestation of our beautiful city. So I hope you will continue to look at how we can interface and ensure that there is a priority to forest or reforest and increase new growth in those areas that are both racially diverse and densely populated with a lower socioeconomic area. So again, thank you so much. It was a very thorough report. Again, I thank also Haley Powell for calling my attention to this very well-written report and the work you're all doing on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commenters? Great. I think I just want to say real quick, I think on page ten thirty-eight and ten thirty-nine, there's definitely some comments around public health. So I think maybe we could just highlight that more in the implementation table.
Any other staff response?
I'd just like to say that I appreciate the commenters and SLO County Public Health and some of certainly, as we consider our stakeholder engagement, that's a new one that we'll add. And they've also had some really great working groups, sort of looking at a variety of land use and environmental issues that we can tap into. I will also say, when we were here at the study session, we were having this sort of question, how are you identifying some of these areas? And my response was, well, we're looking at census tracts and some of these state models. And we all know that those aren't perfect. And after we left, Chris reminded me, well, actually, there's this thing called the the tree equity score and things like that, and the climate equity score. And so we are aware of that data set, and we're, it's part of what's informing how we're seeing priorities.
Awesome. Thank you. Council member Pease, did you?
I actually, I don't have anything to add. I think that we've made great comments. I think the couple of items, kind of moving away from a commemorative grove model to just commemorative trees, if we even want to do that, honestly, benches might be better. And we have thousands of trees that we need to plant. But anyway, the point is, we're going to consider it at some point so that we make a decision. And so I'm supportive of that. And rethinking how we do outreach, but also if our traditional model has been that that folks who are living there are going to be taking care of the trees, and that's not what the folks in this other neighborhood wants, doesn't it more means to me that we need a different approach because there's renters and, you know, folks who are more, you know, just not living here as long, so we want to make sure. But again, I think that's all in the plan and in the intent. So I appreciate that. And I think there'll be some other comments, but otherwise, I'm happy to support the motion to approve the plan.
Thank you. I have to say, I appreciate what you just said right there. I mean, we have two-thirds renters. So as far as in this community, is that the only model we want to look at for taking care of the trees? I think that's important to think about. Councilor Shoresman.
Yeah, thank you for those comments from my colleagues. And I I echo, I appreciate the public commenter. Worked in public health for twenty years. I understand social disparities of health, and I'm very concerned about making sure that we put trees as well as other services in areas where there is low-income individuals or people who are of minority groups and otherwise disadvantaged, making sure that we spread all of our services around, including access to trees and natural shelter that they provide. And so I think that's why that one item really caught my attention, just the language really made me think of, well, of course, somebody who's low-income or in a disadvantaged space is is not going to necessarily want a tree if they have to take care of it themselves. Or maybe they're just not even thinking about trees because that's not the highest priority in their lives. They're working multiple jobs, what have you. And so I think we do need to find ways that we can make it so that we we spread those benefits around regardless of where people live or how much they make or what color their skin is or what have you. So I'm confident that staff is keeping that in mind and that you're looking at all the different ways that we can measure that and look forward to what happens next with this plan.
City Manager Johnson.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Shoresman, I just want to make abundantly clear that council has already that we're committed to planting trees everywhere. And so we try to get buy-in from neighbors and we, you know, we know that the tree's best success is if the neighbor supports it. And, you know, in some instances, and I think you heard from the Cal Poly team last time we were here, is that in some instances, you know, we'll move forward despite the fact that there may not be support because we're trying to take the long view. And we're committed to maintaining those trees whether or not it's that there's neighborhood support, but we know the best chance is to try to get neighborhood buy-in. When people plant those trees, they love those trees, they feel like it's a part of their neighborhood, that's that's how we'll try to approach it. And then in those instances where we can't get the support, then we'll evaluate, well, what's going wrong with our approach? And at the end of the day, we'll try to work to make sure that there are trees in those neighborhoods that don't have them today.
Thank you. That makes absolute sense. Councilmember Francis.
Yeah, just nothing new to add here other than to say thank you all so much for this incredible plan. And also thank you to all of you for having these really great nuanced discussions and to our audience members for bringing these things to our attention. It's just wonderful to be having these conversations on this level and I'm happy to support this.
Thank you. I will just say first, yes, I also will support this. As we've As we've been doing our work in these last few years, just looking at the number of roadmaps, and this is one of the many other guidance plans and documents, and there's just so much work to be done in this going forward, and I just really appreciate how thoughtful and how this has evolved, as far as from the Urban Forest Plan to the Community Forest Plan, from involving the different types of outreach we're talking about, but yet keeping the commemorative aspect of this. And we'll talk about benches at another time, that gives me hives, but anyway, as a past fundraiser. And the giveaway trees and the commensary tree planting, that we'll be looking at that in the future, I think is still really important for people to hear, that that is not finalized at this exact moment. So, and I'm also really thrilled that we're looking at continuing to put in trees in apartment complexes, multifamily units, in some way, shape, or form. So I am happy to make a motion to adopt this plan as we see it.
Councilmember Shoresman?
I'm happy to second it.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Shoresman?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pease?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes 5-0. Sorry, we're having technological challenges up here. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time, Chris and Bob. Okay, so we'll move forward to Item 6C, which is a discussion regarding the county of San Luis Obispo's request to rejoin the Integrative Waste Management Authority, IWMA. And we're going to go ahead and start this with a few words from Vice Mayor Marks before we get to the next steps.
Thank you. Well, this is my mini staff report. However, I'm going to address you as the president of the IWMA this year and our city's representative. And I just wanted to say, we're all aware of the county leaving the IWMA and the chaos that ensued afterwards. And there's no way that we can run the film backwards. We're in this situation where the county has written a letter of intent, which you got a copy of in the staff report. Because first, there was a vote, and then nothing. And so we got back to county staff and said, you have to give us something in writing. A vote is good, but we need a letter of intent. And so this is what this is. And so the executive council, executive committee met, and the request came up, and this is a request that's made to all of the board members, that we go back to our councils and raise the issue of whether or not, of how to respond to this letter of intent that the county, because we haven't responded to it yet. And basically, do we want to enter into negotiations? I'm calling it reunification, like, you know, East and West Germany back in the day. So it is kind of a temperature-taking discussion, direction to me as your representative, and it's a preliminary step. It's not a decision on allowing whether or not the county will rejoin the IWMA, because there's a process that has to unfold, and we don't really know what the process is exactly yet. But when there are decision points, they will come back to our council. So I just wanted to say that there are economies of scale that everyone will benefit from if the county rejoins. I have to also say that the State of California Cal Recycled and the Office of Budget and Planning have been very confused and distressed, really, after the county left the IWMA, because now they have this mini IWMA inside of the County Public Works Department that hasn't quite figured out exactly how to do the reporting that is required, okay? And so basically, what they've done is they've phoned out all of their activities to the IWMA and were billing them for these services. The county MSW report that came out showed that if they continued in that way of having their, I call it a mini IWMA, inside the County Public Works Department, there would be a shortfall of $783,000 just to the county budget. Okay, this doesn't count the economic burden that's been placed on each and every city and the CSDs with their decision to withdraw. So it's clearly better for the county to rejoin the IWMA. And the question is, what about the cities? Because what we've done, a really great job of getting a good viable organization together, the IWMA is in really good shape right now. We have a great executive director, we're going forward. So what are we going to require from the county in order to welcome them back? And so I just wanted to get your kind of thoughts, and it's like taking the temperature, do you want to have us negotiate with the city? What does the city of San Luis Obispo have to say about that?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for really setting the scene for where we're at. And before we take questions, I just want to see, Mr. Floyd, did you want to put any input into this at this point? Okay, great. Councilmember Shoresman?
I guess I just wanted to ask what that negotiate, do we know what that negotiation process looks like?
Well, we're being guided by our legal counsel, Linda Summer Smith is our legal counsel, and Josh George, both of whom have helped the city. I can tell you, as a broad overview, the Joint Powers Agreement, the JPA, has got to be revised. And so far, discussions that have come up are around, there's two major things that people are talking about right now, like the number of supervisors. Do we want to have all five of them on there? Or do we want to have, like, some JPAs like ours that handle solid waste, just have two? Some of them have three, none of them have five. Okay, so that's something that's going to have to be negotiated. And also, the old JPA, well, the present JPA says that an entity can withdraw with 30 days' notice. Well, maybe not, maybe a full year, maybe there's some kind of reimbursement for the costs that are involved if an entity does withdraw. I mean, it could be a city that decides to withdraw. So there's those kinds of issues. When I say the process, that's kind of like the endgame, but what happens between now and then? First step is, do we have agreement as a board on April 12th that we do want to enter negotiations? And then we'll instruct staff to come up with a process. And I'm happy to keep you informed without flooding you with information about that.
And so those negotiating terms would come back to us before, I understand you're looking for guidance from us right now about whether or not we approve of going forward with negotiations?
Yeah.
But if terms of the agreement were to be negotiated, then they would come back to us for discussion or approval before a final MOU would be signed? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, well, it's not an MOU, it's the Joint Powers Agreement. There may be an MOU, a side MOU about this or that, I don't know exactly, but yes, the JPA would have, the revised JPA would have to be approved by all seven cities and the CSDs, right? It was pretty labor-intensive, it took us a long time.
City Manager, would you like to add in here?
If I could make a suggestion, I think what worked well last time is that after the IWMA meets, if there's a decision to move forward with negotiations, I believe last time, what happened is that Peter Cron or the executive director met with the city managers. The city managers met as a group, we did some issue spotting of saying, okay, here are some areas where we want to revise the JPA. I've heard tonight, you know, terms for leaving the IWMA membership, you know, what's the composition of the governance board? If there's other issues that come to mind, I think that would be helpful. And then what I found helpful last time is that once there was the issue spotting done by the various different councils, and the city managers kind of represented their councils, then we in turn made a term sheet. And then that term sheet went back, in this case, and then Peter would take that term sheet, then meet with the county and say, you know, here are the general terms where there's consensus, bring that to the county, and then they would negotiate a successor JPA. And so my recommendation is that you use roughly that approach, I think that's a, you know, reasonable approach. And then, of course, Councilmember Marks can then brief the council as part of her updates on just the status of negotiations.
Yeah, and so the original JPA was, I believe it was 1971, and it never got changed the whole time until the county left. So then we had to do an amended JPA, okay? And so now, if the county is going to try to come back, and we're open to, I mean, it would be good for everyone, very practically speaking, if the county came back on terms that protected the cities and the CSDs.
I think Councilmember Pease has some thoughts?
Yeah, thank you briefly. I really appreciate your leadership again on this issue. I think you've identified, and you've, City Manager reiterated, you know, going forward, what is the process and cost to leave IWMA, who's going to be voting, board members, et cetera. As, you know, as grouchy as I might be about, you know, the vote of three supervisors a year and a half ago, or two years ago, whenever that was, the reality is, is that the people of the county and our people currently of IWMA who suffer if we don't come together. So I do support some kind of a process that we have. And I guess the only loose, or a loose end that I'm not sure what to do with, but one of the things that fell apart, why those supervisors wanted to leave, is because the rest of the IWMA wanted to move forward with some waste management that was above and beyond what the state was doing. And so currently, even when IWMA tried to, you know, keep the thing together, said, okay, okay, we'll just do what the state mandates, and at least let's get the efficiencies there. And, you know, I think that's a loss. And so I don't want the thing to fall apart again, but I do feel like that, you know, anyway, I think it's worth a conversation to see, do we want to tie our hands on that, or do we want to have some openness, so?
Okay, well, I can address that briefly. When Aaron Gomez was the president of the IWMA, the polystyrene ordinance was passed, and then the old majority of the Board of Supervisors wanted to repeal that. And the cities, together, and I have to say, I'm the one that made the motion, I'm the troublemaker here, we said, no, you aren't going to repeal it. So it's still on the books, it's still good law. And the strategic plan, the five-year strategic plan says that we will only, we'll concentrate on state mandates for the next five years. The revised JPA included that only handling state mandates. Well, within that, since then, legislation has come forward banning polystyrene, and nothing has actually passed. But by the time, I mean, it's coming, the whole state is going to ban polystyrene, we were just ahead of the curve. But I have to say, there's enough on our plate with dealing with organic waste, the 1383 and all that, that if, it's a bit of a scramble to just comply with what the state is requiring of us. I see the city manager is nodding his head. So I personally, I understand the wish to be creative and all that, but within meeting standards mandates, there is room for so much creativity. Without, and our jurisdiction, our city, we can come up with our own ordinance if we want to about handling solid waste that would apply to our city. It's a question of getting seven cities and 12 CSDs and the county to agree on something that's not required by the state. So I think it's kind of a safe haven, in my opinion, to just stick with state mandates right now. So I'm basically, I'm reading that, yes, we can negotiate with the county, is that what I'm hearing?
I think that would be, for me, yes, we should be looking at how do we help us work together regionally, and how do we help our community by joining with the county and working together. But I really appreciate you bringing the key issues of when they decided to pick up and leave, that taking your ball and going home moment caused a lot of problems for all of us throughout the entire county, not just our city. So what does that look like going forward? I think that's really important to look at, whether there's a cost for that, whether there's a time period for that, whatever that looks like, I think is a really good plan to look into. Councilmember Shoresman?
So are we looking for a motion to support, or is this just a, okay, we're just providing you guidance on whether or not we're supportive of going forward to the next step?
Yeah, basically, on April 12th, I will be able to say, my council is in favor of negotiating, period, so that's all. But the concern was, that was raised at the executive committee, was especially with the North County councils, that the individual board members don't just state their own personal opinion, that they're really representing the thoughts of their council. So this is happening with all seven cities, this many process tonight, so.
I appreciate your leadership on this and being our representative, and I think it's been articulated, but I'll just reemphasize that I feel my obligation to our city residents, first and foremost, in making sure that they are kept whole and protected in whatever agreement we do going forward. And then it's hard to deny that this couldn't possibly be better for everybody in general, the economies of scale and just the strength and the continuity of messaging and all the things that are covered in the memo. I see no reason, really, why not to go to the next step.
Okay, well, thank you, unless there's anything else, I think we're through here. Thanks.
Well said, councilmembers, and thank you, Vice Mayor, and agreed, your leadership in this has been amazing. So thank you. Well, I know it's already 9:16, but I do need a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and talk about broadband, the broadband plan with the Deputy City Manager Greg Herman and Network Services Supervisor Josh Eriagwa. All right, thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and get back started with Number 6C, no, just kidding, 7A, with the broadband plan update. Josh, would you like to go ahead and start us off?
No problem. Just kick us off with a few things really quickly, we're excited to be here. This is, I know we're the last item, but this is a really important topic. A lot of work and effort went into this update, and it's not yet the final plan, but I think it's a really important touchpoint for you all to get some feedback. So I'm joined by Josh Eriagwa, who's our Network Services Supervisor, and also our consultant, Will Morat, from Magellan Broadband. You'll get a chance to hear from both of them in a little bit. But before we get into that, I do just want to take a moment to thank Josh and the IT team for their work on this project. I've had a chance to connect with different folks at different cities, everyone's sort of working on broadband in some capacity at this point, and broadband is about more than just technology, and it's really outside of the scope of what a traditional IT team really tends to tackle, because it touches on issues of economic development and equity and education. And at different cities, you see different teams leading that effort, and so I'm just super appreciative to those folks stepping up, and I know that they're really driven by those values and that work. And that's really important, because as you're going to hear about tonight, we have a pretty unique and compelling opportunity in front of us as a community to really make substantive progress. substantive progress or potentially make substantive progress as it relates to access and affordability for broadband. So our recommendation tonight, so this is a study session. We are not looking for final action or approval tonight, but it's an important check in what we've learned so far and what the road ahead looks like for all of us. We do have a couple of key policy questions. We're going to highlight those as a part of the report. We would like that feedback and that'll ultimately be something that we incorporate into the final report. But at this time, just an update on the study session. So I'm happy to hand it over to both Josh and Will for the remainder of the presentation.
Members, I'm going to provide a quick overview of our presentation tonight. This presentation is a synopsis of the staff report that was published as part of the agenda. I'll be providing a quick background of the project. And then Will Morat, the project manager for Magellan Broadband, will cover the key points of the work they have conducted so far. We'll finish up with our request for feedback and direction, next steps for the project and our recommendations. So this project started in April of 2022 with an ad hoc committee of the council, which was formed to explore ways the city could improve access and affordability broadband internet for residents and businesses. Based on the findings of that committee in June of 2022, council allocated $600,000 of state and local fiscal recovery funds to study the issue further and develop a broadband plan. Staff released an RFP in August of 2022 to solicit a partner to perform the study. Magellan broadband was selected due to experience performing this work with municipalities. Magellan has led the planning, funding, design, engineering and construction management of over 50 broadband networks nationwide. Magellan's involvement in broadband efforts in Ventura County, Santa Barbara County and the city of Paso Robles was of particular note to the city. The California Public Utilities Commission made LADA grants, local agency technology assistance grants available in September of 2022, and city staff successfully applied for that grant. The CPUC awarded the city $100,000 in October of 2022 to fund the study, which leaves the remainder of the SLFRF funding available for implementation activities. Work began in January of 2023 with Magellan and we're here today today to provide you an update on that work. And with that, I will turn over to Will.
Thank you, Mayor and city councilmembers. Thank you for the time and we're excited to be here. We're very excited to be working with the city of Slow and very appreciative of, as Assistant City Manager mentioned, Josh and his team. We get differing levels of participation from clients and cities and it's been a real pleasure working with Josh and the rest of his team, Miguel and others that have provided information quickly, then very responsive and have really picked up on the critical information that they need so that they can provide you all with the data and the facts so that decisions can be made in a timely manner and and with all the facts in front of them. Again, my name is Will Morat with Magellan. We're now part of the Interest Solutions Group. We represent public clients, so cities, counties, municipalities, tribal organizations, councils of governments, helping them plan for their broadband futures. The city gave us an overarching goal for this project of community access. And so what we've been approaching this is this lens of how do you gain greater community access through the use of public infrastructure and through the use of city assets, city infrastructure? So that's been guiding our work. And that work includes a scope of work that you see in front of you there that started with evaluating that public and private broadband infrastructure, primarily with a public infrastructure as how can it provide more of a public benefit? Streetlights certainly provide a public benefit. They light up our our roads. But there's also the ability for them to provide additional benefits to public through wireless distribution communications, Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi in parks, Wi-Fi in downtown areas or or even high speed broadband access through wireless radio technology. And they can use those streetlights to distribute that. So that's an example of taking infrastructure that can now serve a dual secondary purpose. We're assessing the market and community needs. We conducted a survey, some stakeholder focus groups. We're evaluating city policies and implications for for broadband. That includes coordinating with the CIP projects that the city is undertaking. Essentially, if there's a trench being opened up, is there an opportunity for everybody else to get in there, not just the city for city conduit, but is there a way to coordinate with the private sector, with the ATTs, with the Comcast, with Astounds and say, there's a trench opened up, who wants in? Because it's a fraction of the cost at that moment in time to add that conduit. So we're looking at policies and procedures. We're also looking at the conceptual network design and cost estimates of how it could be expanded and where it needs to be expanded, assessing the business models and operations, the different business models that could be undertaken, including a public-private partnership, and then assessing the grant funding opportunities. This is an unprecedented time for broadband grants in the state with considerable money coming down from the state and the feds. And Slow is uniquely positioned with its existing access assets, the existing investments that it's made over the last 10, 15 years and the planning work that it's already done leading up to this point to put it in position to be competitive for those grants. Again, everything we say tonight is not complete. This is kind of a preliminary examination of what we've found so far. So a quick overview of the broadband assets that we've been looking at and working from. What you see there in the blue is the existing city communications network. It's a mixture of fiber conduit and some traffic signal control that may be some kind of legacy copper. Total's about 35 miles, crosses much of the city. You also see parks in there and some city assets as well. Ballpark, if you were to say, what's this asset currently worth? It's probably in the 10 to 12 million dollar range. So that's an investment that the city's made over time that has real value there that could be leveraged. Currently connects 15 city facilities, four communication towers. The needs, what we identified right off was a need for redundancy to critical sites, but also the need for a redundant citywide backbone loop. And a citywide loop essentially ensures that any cut in that line on that backbone doesn't take down half the city. Right? And this is critical for thinking about community access because any provider of community services is going to want to maintain a certain service level agreement, a certain service level for those customers to make sure that somebody with a backhoe on Main Street doesn't take down half the city for three weeks when they accidentally cut a line. So those are the things that we're looking at for the assets. For the needs assessment, it's still ongoing. We actually have two two more stakeholder groups, I think, scheduled in the next couple of weeks. I'm talking with education, social services, transportation utilities. Community survey responses that these are kind of preliminary results. We actually are up to about 592 speed tests. These numbers are going to change a little bit. But what we found now, this is an online community survey. It's a convenience survey, so it's not a scientific survey, but it does give us a pretty good idea of what speeds are, what people are paying for and what they think they're paying for. If your internet's like mine, you know, up to 800 megs or, you know, and if it's nighttime and I want to watch Netflix, it's probably like four. So so we're able to test those by asking people, what do you think you're paying for? What are you actually getting? There's an embedded speed test in there. A little bit concerning what we see, you know, median monthly costs, we're actually seeing that now with all the results coming down closer to about $64. But the price per megabyte is something that we think is relevant. And right now, that's actually at about 69 cents per megabyte. That's higher than we would expect for a major urban area like Slow. We would want to see that somewhere in the 25 to 30 cent range, at least if not lower. What we often find, we haven't done this analysis specific for Slow, is is that that price ranges based on the tiers. And so a customer who orders a high level tier service is going to be paying 10 cents, 12 cents, 15 cents per meg. And your lower end customers that order, well, I just need basic internet, are going to be paying a dollar a meg or a dollar to 15 a meg. And that exacerbates the digital divide. That exacerbates the the access that people need for high speed broadband, for telehealth, jobs, employment, education, pretty much everything nowadays. So these are indicative of the 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 need within the community for having more equitable, equal, right, access to community and high speed broadband. So it's not just a simple, well, how much is it cost per month? It's how much are you paying for that? We worked up a conceptual network design based on the needs, based on assets, based on what we saw. So again, the blue is the existing city communications network, that 35 miles. The red is what we've identified for a new conceptual design to add. It's another 17 and a half miles of backbone and five miles of laterals to get into some particular neighborhoods and specific assets. What this conceptual design does is it creates a redundant loop for uninterrupted services along that backbone. Now, you're still going to have a spur that goes out into a particular neighborhood, but that might only take down, you know, a few dozen homes as opposed to the southern half of the city. So this does create a loop and you can see that, like, for instance, down just north of the airport there, where you see the red line going east, west across, that connects that southern portion of the city into a bigger loop. This city backbone would pass 24,000 households and 1,700 businesses in the city within a typical buffer. I think in this case, we use 750 feet. That's a typical buffer in which a provider might be able to say, okay, I can go out and build that last mile service chops into each individual home. So that's a significant market reach there, 24,000 homes. And that creates what we think is significant community access for the city to be able to to get into these neighborhoods. The conceptual design also transitions away from the city's use of third party fiber and utilizes solely its own city-owned fiber. And it connects city sites, including some more traffic signals, all 30 parks, water tanks, lift stations. Connecting parks, water tanks, lift stations, what that also does is it penetrates neighborhoods that typically don't, you know, don't really have that kind of service. So by getting out to those, you're providing service for city services, but you're also, hey, now I'm in a neighborhood that I wasn't in before. More households passed with possible ability to get services. So this conceptual network design, it invests and it builds on the existing city network. The cost for the red essentially in that map is what you see here. We've broken it down into two phases. Phase one is the city loop, the redundant loop. It includes upgrades, not just the red of new build, but it includes upgrades to 22 miles of that 35 miles of existing fiber. In most cases, it's probably just splicing in, putting in splice points, but it might be changing out some of the cables for higher strand count capacity. And it includes the 17 miles of additional build. Second phase is all the parks and the water assets. And then you see the total cost there broken down between the different design and engineering costs, which is your kind of, you know, putting this all pin to paper and making sure that it's ready to build, getting an engineer on it, all the way through the construction What we what we typically see too with these is that the design engineering process is a chance to value engineer your project. It's the opportunity for civil engineers to go in there and identify, wait a minute, there's more here than we thought. There's, we don't need to replace this cable or there's a there's a pull box here we didn't know about. Or look, there's aerial power going through this neighborhood. We don't need to go underground. We can use aerial because there's already existing cables. That that cuts the cost. Going from aerial alone will drop your cost 60% or more. So typically, once you go through the design engineering process, you see your total construction costs come down because you've value engineered the project. We're ballparking this right now, assuming everything's underground, everything's a new build. So those costs will likely come down somewhat. The different business models, you know, it's really a spectrum and you can make a determination on where a particular market needs to be based on the risk assessment that the that the city might do. That spectrum runs all the way from public policy down at that kind of lower, lower left hand corner there at the start of the access, which is, I wouldn't even say it's a laissez-faire approach. It's really, it's really a, it's more than most cities do. It's saying, we do have effective coordination. We are coordinating with utilities so that everyone can jump in a trench at the same time. Most cities don't do that. And so that's a big step just to go there. And then that good spectrum goes all the way up to the full retail broadband services, which is your, you know, it's a utility. You're providing it just like you might water or power. Typically, cities that do the full broadband services already have some other kind of utility of water or power. So they have customer service centers and they have distribution and they have these assets. So what you usually see is cities saying, I'm going to go somewhere in the middle and I'm going to do it with a private partner. I'm going to do it through a public-private partnership, who's going to operate, manage and sell those services over the city-owned public network, city-owned public infrastructure. And there's a fair exchange there. In return for utilizing public infrastructure, that private provider provides maybe lease payments on a monthly, you know, flat lease payments on a monthly basis. Maybe there's a revenue share component, maybe to do new construction for the city in exchange for for access to those fibers, or they provide a local match for grant opportunities. The other benefit of having a public-private partnership is that the, one of the biggest grant opportunities we'll talk about in a moment, the SB 156 last mile grant application does require an experienced entity to be able to operate that network. So for a city like Slow, it's it's almost kind of a requirement to have that partner in place. So listed here, two of the the biggest grant opportunities we see right now. There are more and there's going to be more included and we're evaluating those for the final report. But I included these two for two different reasons. One, the SB 156 last mile grant because it's the most pressing grant opportunity. Applications are expected to be opened by the CPUC. Public Utilities Commission says early summer. We've seen June, we've seen mid-June. Right now, that's where we're, you know, if you go to the website right now, it says stay tuned for updates. So I checked it about 20 minutes ago, kind of obsessively checking it because they said, first they said March 31st. That didn't happen. So application windows are going to open very soon. This was a billion dollars that the state allocated for urban counties. And they allocated it based on the total number of unserved within the county. And so there's a $22.3 million earmark for the county of San Luis Obispo. The two big requirements that we know of that are, you know, in the in the Senate bill, there's a 20% local match and there's an experienced ISP, a service provider partner required. So finding a partner is critical for the city if it were to move forward and finding that 20% local match would be critical as well. They recently changed some of the some of the guidance and they suggested that they're going back to a model that incorporates both unserved households and communities as well as looking at disadvantaged communities. That's all they've said so far. We interpret that to mean social vulnerability indexes, income levels, other socioeconomic factors and risk vulnerabilities that might exist within communities that would help narrate the need for having broadband within the community and hence grant eligibility. The other grant application, grant opportunity that I've included here is the EDA grants. And I included these because they're a recurring grant year after year and they're they're very effective and they've been used widely by cities. It's it ties the eligibility criteria to employment, either attraction or creation or retention of jobs. It's it's usually used if you have key development sites or key development zones. It has been limited in funding the last few years because all the federal funding has been going through to ARPA. But it is expected to be refunded again this fall. There's typically a 20 to 40% match, depending on the project and some other things. And part of what you can use for that match is an in-kind contribution such as, we already have a $10 million network that we can leverage, right? So there's opportunities there to get a little creative with your match funding as well. Again, there are others that are that are going to be evaluated in the final report, but these are the two kind of biggest ones. One, one note on the SB 156 last mile grants, an eligible applicant can be a city with a qualified partner. An eligible applicant can be a private internet service provider. So you can, you can bet that the the big, the big companies are going to be looking at this as free money to help them build wherever they particularly want to build. So it is going to be a competitive process. And I think that is it for me.
Great, thank you. I'm just going to take the council through the remaining parts of the presentation, including some of the key questions that we'd like to have some discussion around tonight. And then we're going to be available for more broad questions. Also, there's a lot of information, not only in the staff report, but also in the technical memo that Magellan provided. So as we mentioned tonight, this is a check in. Final plan's going to come to you in June. But the key question for consideration tonight is really around this concept of a public-private partnership and the council's level of comfortability around that. And we'll talk about why that's uniquely important right now. It's stated in the report, but just to call it out specifically, this is a recommendation for both staff and Magellan to move forward with a public-private partnership. It is in fact required if we want to be eligible. It is in fact required if we want to be eligible for the last mile funding, and that's because the city is not an internet service provider, and so we would not be able to meet that criteria to be able to access those grant funds. But I think more importantly, it allows for a competitive process for us to be able to solicit proposals from private sector partners that maximizes private investment, maximizes affordability and reach within the community, and minimizes the impact on city funds and resources. And I think there's some unique approaches to how that's happening. It's also the contemporary approach. So when you look at cities that are now preparing to be able to access these SB one fifty-six funds, this is the approach that they're taking, both out of necessity, but also because it can potentially solve some problems that are facing cities, including the twenty percent match requirement, the additional constructions that's going to be required to be able to do that. Those are all topics that we're able to potentially develop proposals with, with a selected partner, via negotiations, return back to council for final approval. So we'll get to the recommendations in just a moment, but this is one item that we just wanted to highlight for discussion and deliberation for this evening. Next slide. Next steps. So should the council provide direction on that item tonight? That's really the key piece we need now to finalize a plan. We're prepared now to come back to council on June twentieth. We actually were planning to come back later, but because of the sort of dynamic process and changing timeline as it relates to the CPUC and the fact that it is a competitive process, and the fact that we've been able to do some good work both internally and with the consultant team, we're ready to finalize this plan faster. And that's going to be important because that's going to be an important component of what we may eventually end up submitting as a part of our grant application to the CPUC. Should we get consensus from the council to include the private partner component of this? We'd also plan to return to council at that time to seek authorization to go out to RFP to solicit a partner for that application process, and then also we would need formal authorization from council to be able to apply for that grant. Next slide. So our recommendation this evening is just to receive that update, provide an input on those key questions, in particular for the public-private partnership. But if you may have noticed, at the very end of your report, we have an alternative recommendation, and I just wanted to take a moment to highlight that alternative recommendation. Josh, if you don't mind bringing that up on the screen. And that is because this is a pretty unique process that we're involved in as well as a unique opportunity. And so, you know, we were originally planning for a late twenty-twenty-three opening date for those applications, and we were made aware in March that it was going to be at some point in June. We were expecting to get clarity, as Will mentioned, that on what exact, what exact date that would be, as long as some eligibility requirements. Last Friday, that didn't happen, but we anticipate that'll happen relatively soon. Given that this is going to be a first-come, first-served process, the council may wish to consider actually giving us authorization tonight to go out to RFP for that partner so that we could complete that in parallel with the plan. If we were to do that, that would save us approximately three months off the timeline that would be needed to eventually turn around and submit a grant application to the CPUC. We would certainly provide, if the council wished to do this, it would, we would certainly be able to provide an update on where we're at with that RFP process at the June twentieth meeting, when you adopt the final broadband plan. But we don't anticipate that we would be able to have a full partner agreement in place until summer, and it's important to note that any partner agreement that we would get into would ultimately need to come to the council for full approval prior to that. This would be an option that the council may wish to consider if everything that we're saying is making sense, there's a high level of comfortability with the public-private partnership approach for this, and there's an interest in wanting to put the city in the best possible position to be able to receive some of those grant funds through this process. And with that, we'll bring up our original recommendation, and we are available to answer
Thank you so much for the report from each of you and Councilmember Francis.
Yeah, thank you so much for all of the hard work you've all obviously been doing. With that SB one fifty-six grant, you had mentioned that businesses can also apply independently from cities and looking at the whole spectrum of potential services that we could choose to go with as far as a partnership or not partnership. What would be the disadvantage of kind of waiting for a business to come to us with their funds and build out our network? Do we see the opportunity for that versus us making this massive upfront investment and having a partner that also comes in with us?
It's a connectivity problem. Internet joke, okay. So I'll let the team chime in, but I think the short answer to your question is that if we are the ones that are driving our application, we can be sure that it is being driven by the values of our community. If there are other applications that are being put forward by other providers, we cannot necessarily speak to what those motivators may be. So I think we will ultimately have more control over access and affordability. Should we be the ones that partner with that private sector provider and receive those grant funds, they will be working through an agreement with us to get that infrastructure into the ground and eventually get services out to community members.
That's an excellent transition to my next question, which is, looking at figure one and the agenda correspondence that you all provided, that all the address points that fall within seven hundred and fifty feet of the areas that are, a lot of the areas that are not highlighted in there appear to fall in the portions of the city that have higher levels of low-income residents, kind of overlaying the maps that we've seen, particularly with the forest plan we were just looking at. And just kind of comparing that demographic mapping that we have, and then this mapping, it raised some concerns that maybe we're missing a lot of the folks that we're intending to get to. And I was wondering how we're going to address that if we have that seven hundred and fifty-foot issue.
Sure, great question. Will, do you want to talk a little bit about the different ways that those folks might get reached?
Yeah, so I think there's a couple of ways. One, certainly, we could modify the maps and look at some of those other factors and figure out how to build into those, a backbone into those areas, and try to cover more of those homes, those households. The other thing to consider is that a private partner is going to come in, and you're probably not going to find a private partner who's going to come in cold and say, you know, here I am from Texas, and I've never been to Slow before, but let's do business. It's probably going to be a partner who's already knows the community, is working in the community, has staff and technicians and field techs and labor here as well, which means they probably also have assets of their own. And so then there's an opportunity to meld their assets with your assets and figure out, okay, right, now we can get into some of those areas perhaps. Through an RFP and the negotiation process as well, there's an opportunity for the city to say, well, let's look at your map, and let's look at our map, and let's see now where are we still missing, and let's modify this. Before we put our grant application in, let's, you know, look, you're here, I'm here, we don't need to build here, let's go build over here instead. And so there's an opportunity to refine that process when you get into the design engineering, and once you've already begun those negotiations with your potential partner as well.
That's good to hear. I was particularly concerned about the areas on, off of south Hagera, and then on the east and south of Orca, it looked like there were some gaps in there that were a little worrisome. So thank you for all that, and I'll pass on to somebody else.
Thank you, Councilmember Pease.
Thank you so much. My question is about the, kind of the regionalism, and if we're looking at efficiencies, is there, so countywide, SlowCog is convening a broadband roundtable as all the different cities are looking at this in the county. And so I'm wondering if having the city kind of do our own study and our own outreach partnership, et cetera, is that, are we missing an opportunity for even greater efficiency at a bigger scale?
Answer that in a second, but just, I think the short story is that we are participating in those conversations, and I think that broadband is a broad top, sorry, is a big topic. There is last mile, there is middle mile, there are different efforts with different funding sources underway. I think the important piece is that we're a part of those conversations, and we're making sure that what we're doing is complementary to the other work efforts, but there is not a group that is replicating the work that we are proposing to do right now that is ultimately responsible to the city to put forward this type of project, to be able to get these resources to our community members. Josh?
Yeah, the only piece I'll add to that, I have been involved now, I've been invited to be a part of the technical advisory committee for the county's efforts, as well as just got some invites today for SlowCog's work that they're starting up, so we'll be participating in that. In those, in some of the kickoff meetings we've had with the county and with others, we have acknowledged the fact that there's a danger of duplicating a lot of effort. And so we've been talking with them about, hey, we're willing to share our data with the county, we're willing to, you know, share back and forth to make sure that those efforts are cohesive. At the end of the day, regionally, we're going to have to be able to cooperate across the county, and Slow, I think, is going to be positioned as a good hub for that because we're in the middle of the county. You know, most of the major internet connection points from overseas and from up and down the state actually land in San Luis Obispo, and so for North and South County to get ready access to those, they're going to have to connect into those, and we can start to look at being part of that bridge to get the rest of the county into those places as we build out our ring. And that's the other big important piece of building out our ring, is that we need it to be resilient enough that not only does it serve our community, not only does it serve our city with uninterrupted access, but as we start to become a bridge and start working with the rest of the county, we're going to need to be able to provide uninterrupted access to those networks that are connecting in.
Thank you. I always thought it was Gerber Beach that was the hub, so thank you for that. Michelle, you just turned it off.
Sorry. Now I'm on. Thank you to Councilmember Francis for keying into one of my questions about locations where I was seeing some empty spots too that I know are areas where we have low-income housing that is either built or coming online soon. The other main question that I had about the public-private partnership versus some of the other models like open access, not a huge expert on the internet or broadband industry, but it sort of seems like some of the problems that we have right now with prices of internet connectivity is due to lack of competition. And so I wonder if, is there any disadvantage to sort of tying ourselves to a partner to be able to go after these grants and get some of this funding, but it requires this partnership for the match? Is there any negative impacts down the road in terms of competition here? We kind of hook ourselves up to a single provider, and then they've sort of cornered the market on the city of San Luis Obispo and can raise rates down the road and make it unaffordable for people, and that's not the intent that we're going for right now?
Yes, and I'll have the team chime in a little bit more as well. That can be a concern, and I think it's a concern that we would look to alleviate via the negotiation process and ultimately what that partner agreement was. So certainly, these are going to be limited-term agreements that we get into, and I think what we're really trying to do is stimulate the marketplace and simulate additional investment in the area that will continue, like, potentially beyond whatever that agreement date would be, and the services that would then be in place. Will, do you want to talk about some of the approaches from other cities with respect to that?
Yeah, absolutely. You're right about, you know, having terms and limits. The other component is, is the part of the negotiations with that agreement, price can be a negotiating point, certainly, a price cap or a price max or two service tiers, so that you could ensure that you're meeting certain price points and ensure that you have that competitive provider that's partnered with the city. Cities that effectively utilize an open access network are typically much bigger urban areas with a much, you know, a bigger market, especially when it comes to business services, anchor institutions. That's where we typically see those open access models thrive. You know, Los Angeles, populated areas, Los Angeles County, you know, the Bay Area. So I think it would be difficult to try to create an open access and actually find a second provider when you're already sort, you know, you've already got two providers, you're trying to find a third to create more competition, there might not be room for a fourth quite yet. Typically, they look for, can I get a third of the market to make their numbers work? And so if you add a fourth one, it starts to get hard to find that third one. So I would recommend negotiating those specific price points, those specific neighborhoods you want to get into, the specific digital literacy programs and, you know, advertisements for the Affordable Connectivity Program, all these things you want to ensure create a community benefit. Those can be terms for that partnership agreement.
So communities our size, you're saying mostly go with this public-private partnership model? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah. I'm trying to think offhand, the one that's coming to mind in terms of cities that have gone it alone, you know, Chattanooga, Tennessee is probably the most commonly one that you hear out there, that when it created their own Chattanooga fiber. But they already had a power utility, they already have the infrastructure set up, they already had customer service, they also spent hundreds of millions of dollars. So, yeah, most cities that are, you know, dealing with budget constraints and resource constraints say, let's find a public-private partnership. The key here is knowing that you have a huge asset, and potentially that's going to grow with a grant fund. That gives you leverage in those negotiations to say, what's important to the city, and how do you ensure those with the partnership?
Okay, and last, but this is sort of a, maybe a strange question, maybe elementary, but you mentioned in the needs list, connectivity to parks. What are we connecting, what's the redundancy, or what's, is it the facilities? Is it for park facilities? It's not like places for people to plug in to the internet while they're using the park, right? It's, just trying to understand what that would mean in reality.
So there's a couple of things there. There are some opportunities for us to connect city facilities that are at those parks, which gives us better reliability to those sites and better, you know, irrigation control and lighting controls and all of these things that turn into environmental issues, right? Making sure we're not watering too much, making sure the lights don't stay on all night, those types of things. For the community access piece, we did hear from the council a lot around the COVID era, can we set up wireless in the parks? Because we had kids that didn't have good access to internet at home, they didn't have a way to go to school at that point, and, you know, we all saw the stories of the kids that were sitting in the McDonald's parking lot trying to do their homework. So it was something that we talked about. We didn't have the infrastructure in place to be able to do something like that at that point. So being able to connect out to those parks potentially gives us the ability to do some of those programs in the future. And then the last piece of that, Will mentioned it a little bit, is once you start connecting out to those parks and where that backbone, then you're closer, you're deeper into neighborhoods, and that private partner that's going to come in, it's easier for them to build out the last mile to the homes around those parks, around the water tanks, around the, you know, the various different things that the city maintains around the city, and get broader reach into those neighborhoods.
Great, that's better than I thought, Ben. Thank you.
Yeah, I love the idea of the parks because I think watching people try to get, oh, let me go buy that one burger or that one, you know, coffee so I can go and use their Wi-Fi is not a great experience, and if we can provide that more, that really is really, when we're talking about equity, something that's really key. So I think that's fantastic. Most of my colleagues have asked most of my questions, but we keep talking about the open trenches, and I totally understand the concept. And is there a point where, like, we tell CDD, okay, every time there's a project, just shout it out to all the, you know, charter, Astound, et cetera, all those groups? Or how does that work?
So it's typically, when it works well, it's a regular utility coordination meeting. There's a master list of all projects, city projects, county projects, PG&E projects, Comcast projects, Astound projects, power, water, right? Everybody kind of comes together, and someone's got to curate that list, which is not an easy task, and that's where it falls onto the city to say, well, this is occurring within the city, we have an interest here. So there's a list that's curated by the city, there's regular quarterly, if not bi-monthly, utility coordination meetings where everybody talks and shares and figures out. And when I've seen it in action and been a part of it, what I've seen is sometimes it's just been, hey, we're going to do, you know, Public Works says we're going to do a road overlay, you know, we're going to scrape it out, put on a new road overlay on Main Street. We got that scheduled for, you know, say, fourth quarter twenty-twenty-four. And then all of a sudden, you'll hear water pipe up and say, well, we've got to do water main in there, we don't have that scheduled until twenty-twenty-six, so let's see if we can move ours up, or you move yours back, or whatever, so that we're not digging a street twice. And then you can also have that same discussion where IT is involved and says, we have a need for conduit there, or Comcast. Or Comcast is in the room and says, we have a need for conduit there. And then you can share out those costs and everybody's cost goes down because you're sharing a single project among multiple parties. But it is a, it does require a curator.
Got it. Thank you. City manager?
Yeah, I've had some conversations to that exact question, Madam Mayor, with our Public Works Director. And eventually, we just need to embody this in our engineering standards so that we know that it's a standard. So whether it's a public project or a private project, it's just, it's embodied in our standards so that, you know, we don't, I mean, I think that approach works, but we want to get beyond catch as catch can and get into something where it's just simply, it's more methodical over time.
Thank you. That makes a lot of sense. Josh?
And just to add on to what Derek's saying, we have also started some of those conversations with CIP Engineering and things. And we know that standards updates are coming and so we're starting to fold into what that timeline looks like to say, as the broadband plan comes forward and gets adopted, we're going to have some recommendations around standards updates. There's things like micro trenching that is coming down in state law that we have to be able to allow, but we can put standards around that so that it works for our city and still allows that to be an option for providers that might want to come into the area that reduces the cost. But we need those types of things in our engineering standards to be able to hold those providers accountable to those when they want to, when they say they want to come in and use micro trenching to reach XYZ name road.
Perfect, thank you. Well, if there's no other questions, I'll leave, public comment? Okay, no public comment. All right, so we'll go ahead and move forward on the conversation. Any other, or any, sorry, other, any guidance we'd like to provide, Vice Mayor Marks?
From what I've heard tonight, to me, it makes sense that we go for the private-public partnership. And I also like the idea of giving authority tonight to issue the RFP earlier, the alternate recommendation. And I forgot what the other recommendation was there in terms of direction, was that it? I thought there were three things. Okay. So when the moment is right, I'd be willing to make a motion.
And I think we're just giving guidance, so we don't have to actually make a motion, right? Or do we need to for the alternate?
Helpful to just codify that for the city, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Sorry.
So just direction is good enough, right?
No, we will make a motion, so you later will come back to you. Thank you. Councilmember Shoresman?
Yeah, I'm just really grateful to staff. I think you guys have done a great job with all of this. It's really exciting to see from our first little subcommittee meetings, this sort of blossom. It just sort of seems like the timing and all the, everything just kind of fell into place with this. Not to mention, of course, didn't just fall into place, you've done a lot of work to make it happen as has our consultants, so appreciate that as well. But yeah, just, you know, I do have those concerns that I sort of mentioned about the public-private partnership, but it certainly seems like the benefits outweigh, you know, the potential concerns. And I'm confident that staff can negotiate those agreements in the best way possible so that it's most advantageous and gets at the goal that we're really looking for, which is equity, you know, as well as providing access throughout the city and supporting our facilities. But this is really a big equity issue for me. And so I know that you will do your best to do well by our residents. And I'm happy to support the motion to go forward with doing this tonight so that you can all have the guidance that you need to move ahead with the grant process and the RFP.
Thank you. I keep seeing, do you want to say something, City Manager?
I was just going to hop in and say, if the council supports this, I just want to be clear. The council was gracious enough to set aside TMARPA funding, so we'll utilize that funding for purposes of developing the RFP. And then if we have any residual balance over, then we'll return back to council and get some direction.
Thank you. I agree, Councilmember Shoresman, from the little task force and discussing ARPA funds and wondering, we're not a community that has the largest amount of low income. And so I was concerned, how do we have a way to get access to funds to make this happen? How do we even look into this? So I really appreciate all of your work to figure out how to help the people who kind of are getting, you know, lost in the cracks in a sense. And we saw through COVID, people not getting access to school or getting access to their work because of their kids and having to help them manage that. So I really want to be able to be part of helping our whole community have access. I also really appreciate, in a way, it's true, things are falling in place where, you know, the funds are coming available at the same time. And if we can help you get access to them, I think that is fantastic. Our chance as a government to be nimble is always challenging and rare. So I think it's fantastic to find ways to help you be able to do that with all of your work at the same time. Any other comments? All right, I think we're ready for that motion, Vice Mayor.
Okay, I would like to move that we continue the great progress with broadband and look for a private-public partnership and that we give out authority tonight to issue the RFP as per the alternate recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmember Shoresman?
I think I'll second that.
Great, thank you very much. City Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Vice Mayor Marks? Yes. Councilmember Shoresman?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pease?
Yes.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes, the motion passes 5-0. Thank you for all of your work and thank you for staying late as well. Okay, so now is the time for liaison reports and communications. Any updates, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I will not update you about the IWMA, but I will say that I read in the paper this morning that Superior Court Judge Tana Coats ruled against the lawsuit brought by the quote-unquote "friends" of Oceano Dunes, which means that the dust control measures at Oceano Dune State Vehicular Recreation Area are lawful. And this involves the Air Pollution Control District. So this is a huge step forward. And basically, we're talking about 130 acres of dust pollution control measures that they were trying to overturn unsuccessfully. And so the Coastal Commission and the Air Pollution Control District have won the lawsuit, so ta-da.
Thank you for the update. Councilmember Francis?
Yeah, I don't have anything to update, but I did have a question for City Manager. Earlier, Michael Codron mentioned we will have an opportunity to hear more about and explore alternative funding sources for affordable housing. I was kind of curious when we anticipate that happening? And he had said that potentially needing some direction from council on that. So I just wanted to make sure we kind of close the loop on that discussion.
Great question. So, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Francis, we've got a whole work program for the next two years. So we're really hoping to encapsulate all the little loose ends in that so that we have an expectation from council about what to explore. And housing and homelessness is, of course, is one of your major city goals. And so if that is something you want to look at, you know, and it's not explicitly spelled out in the way that meets the council's expectations, then we'd look for, you know, consensus amongst the council to pursue that.
And that would happen?
On April 18th. So yeah, so we just released on Friday the whole packet for strategic budget direction. So just for everyone, that is really for the council to leave their imprint so that when we come back in June, on June 6th, that we show up with a, you know, a budget and a work program that reflects the council's. So this is kind of a check-in before we bring back the financial plan.
Excellent, thank you so much. Thank you, Councilmember Shoresman?
Yeah, just one update. It was mentioned earlier tonight about the Cougar Conservancy presentation. I was glad to be able to go attend that at the Marriott last weekend. It was a full house, lots of people there, lots of people asking really good questions. Made some connections with some folks at the Cougar Conservancy that I hope to reach out to again. They actually talked about that they offer services to neighborhoods who are having these types of encounters and sounded like they might be willing, you know, hopefully, this is, you know, well, we hope that we don't have any experiences like this for a long time, but it is a wildland interface area and so there's a potential that this could happen again. And so it's nice to know that there is an organization that can maybe provide some support and education if we do want to provide that to our neighborhoods or if something like this happens again. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I would say, just kind of tying into Freddie, Audie and staff on campus, staff at the city, I met with Central Coast State Parks Association, CISPAM, and Freddie has been helping them around the monarchs and providing education. So we'll be trying to figure out how we can provide more education, which really ties in with our monarch pledge we did back in October and how we can provide more education to the community and get more involved. And of course, if people want to provide a place to put planting more butterfly plants, thank you, milkweed. I always forget the name of that, I don't know why. There is access to get some of that for free, so we'd love to have that helped. Also, this was just a really busy last couple of weeks. We had the ribbon cutting, which I think almost all of you were at, for the complete streets. And just really thankful for all the staff that put this together and not just put the ribbon cutting together, but did all of the miles and miles and miles of work for our Slow in Motion program or project. Also, I've had a plethora of meetings around homelessness. I've met with the Shower with the People and with CapSlow and with Derek and the supervisor, Don Ortiz Leg. And really just trying to figure out, how do we help our community with obviously the strategic, you know, going forward and our plan that we've done? And how do we match it with the county and how do we go forward? But also kind of that in-between, what are we doing before we get to this point? You know, we have this, we have affordable housing in the plan and we have projects in process, but we need help right now for some people. And it may be around a different type of safe parking. It might be about getting nutritional food to people. You know, we have so many things that we have to look at, but really, how do we help is really a key conversation we're having right now. And then lastly, on Monday, we got to meet with Congressman Panetta and celebrate the 25th anniversary of the Slow Community Foundation. And that was a really cool experience and being able to share what we're doing in our community a little bit, talk about infrastructure funds and how we still need Congressman Panetta and Congressman Carvajal for their help. And we're also very thankful for all the work that they have done so far. So really been a great couple of weeks and so much more in the next couple of weeks, so we'll talk about it then. Anything else? Okay, and we'll wrap it up and we'll see you back here for the special meeting on Thursday, April 6th, at 1:00 PM for the City Council Retreat. And then we'll be back with everybody on April 18th at 5:30 PM here to talk about budget. Thanks so much and have a great night.